Welcome to the City Council's August 11th Regular City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with the City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and our City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk, Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. And I also welcome all of our attendees who are here for our August 11th City Council meeting. At this time, I'll ask the City Council to remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations and respond to any City Council member questions. For members of the public who wish to provide public comment, either during general public comment or on a specific agenda item, when the mayor calls for public comment, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That'll alert us that you have a public comment on the current item. I'll have the opportunity to open up your mic, and you can address the City Council at that time. Also, in the top right side of your screen, you will see a handout. That is an updated page of the July 14 minutes that has been also distributed to the City Council at this time for the consent item that we have this evening on the minutes. That will conclude the instructions for this evening. Mayor Taylor, I turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. I also want to inform the public that the City Council has had some difficulty with their emails recently, and so some of your emails have not been read, which is why you may not have received a reply. The next is to introduce our City Manager, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, for a report from closed session, and to introduce our interim Police Chief, Dave Spiller.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Starla Jerome Robinson, City Manager. There is no report out from the closed session this evening. And having said that, I'd like to introduce Dave Spiller, Chief as our new interim Chief of Police. Chief Spiller comes to us as a recent retiree from the city of Pleasanton. I'm very honored and pleased that he's joined our staff during this interim period. He started, he worked in Mountain View for some time in San Diego before that, but started in Pleasanton in 2002, 2003 as a lieutenant, promoted up to captain in 2003, and served in that role through 2011, and then was promoted to chief and served as chief in Pleasanton from 2011 to 2020. So join me in welcoming Chief Spiller. We have, as we've all been talking about, a number of opportunities and challenges ahead of us, and I think he'll be a great addition to our executive staff as we navigate that. So, welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. I am eager to step forward and support the organization. I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Ms. Jerome Robinson, for the introduction. As I said, I'm happy to serve. I've been a 30-plus-year public safety professional, and I look forward to offering my experience to the city of Menlo Park. And I thank you for your warm welcome.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and welcome, Chief Spiller. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up by public comment other than to provide general information. And Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item G, which is General Public Comment, please engage the hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. Mayor Taylor, I do see a hand raised. Our first public commenter is Kristi Peregro. Kristi, you are off mute and able to address the City Council? You will also have to unmute yourself from your end. Perfect, Kristi, thank you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. This is Ali from Bistro Vita. Hello, Drew, Ray, Cecilia, Betsy. All what we asking for, thank you very much for your help, and thank you for pushing for us to get the outdoor. We built a beautiful outdoor. Some of you already saw what we did, and we tried to do a really good job. So thanks to you, the planning, and the chambers. And all what we asking, since the whole social distancing and the COVID-19 thing is going to be carrying with us for a little bit, if we can get these two parking spaces where we built the new patio out there, and we can keep it, because we invested almost $22,000 on that project. And we were thinking, because we got the fall, and it's going to be a little cold. And again, we don't know how long this thing is going to last with us. We'd love to keep this one for a while, just with the other patio, because this, we would do all the business, really. Our business is down by 60%, but again, at least we're open, we're doing baby steps, and we asking if we can keep it for good. That's all we asking for. And if you have to charge us fees, maybe for these two parking spaces, it's by all mean, not a problem. You know, we paid for the fees. But again, all what we use, really, with the loading zone and two parking spaces. And as you see, we built a beautiful patio out there, totally different than everybody else. And I really, like, I always do invest in my place, because I'm part of the community, and I just would like to see us to stay in business as long as we go.
Thank you for your public comment. So again, if anybody has a public comment on G, which is General Public Comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment. The next item on our agenda is Item H1, Proclamation: Recognizing the 75th Anniversary of the Atomic Bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, and Menlo Park Bizin Peace Week. Recognizing the 75th Anniversary of the Atomic Bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, Japan, and Menlo Park Bizin Peace Week, whereas the mornings of August 6th and August 9th in Japan in the year of 2020 mark the 75th anniversary of the bombings of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, respectively. And whereas the end of World War II, shortly after the bombings, ushered in an era of continual peace between the United States of America and Japan. And whereas in 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower, with great foresight, created organizations like Sister Cities International to carry out the mission of achieving peace through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation between peoples around the world. And whereas, visible proof of this long-lasting peaceful relationship between our two countries is present right here in our own city, where we have enjoyed a wonderfully enriching cross-cultural relationship with our sister city, Bizin, since 2015. And whereas, the peaceful relationship between the United States of America and Japan is widespread in that there are over 455 sister-city state relationships that have been recorded between our two countries, including the groundbreaking relationship between St. Paul, Minnesota, and Nagasaki, Japan, which was the first post-war sister-city relationship with the United States and an Asian city. And whereas, bell ringing has long played a role in the United States representing peace. And in Japan, where New York bell ringing marks a new era, and the United States and Japan together have ushered a new perpetual area, era of peace. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the city of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, hereby recognize the week of August 5th through August 12th, 2020, as the Menlo Park Bizin Peace Week. And all people in both cities are urged to commemorate the occasion by participating in a bell-ringing ceremony, either individually at home, virtually, or in some safe public space, public area, taking care to observe all public health orders and advisories. And at this time, Ms. Heron, do we have a public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Yes, we did receive a video, a public comment from Judy Adams. I am going to play that now for you, as well as members of the public.
This community art installation in Menlo Park, California, of more than 1,000 paper cranes folded by many hands commemorates the 75th anniversary of the atomic bombings of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, August 6th and 9th, 1945. The installation includes 350 paper cranes and seven strands given by the people of Aihime, Japan. Through this project, we honor those who lost their lives and those whose lives were changed forever by the bombings. The installation follows the tradition inspired by Sadako Sasaki, a young survivor of the Hiroshima bombing, who later succumbed to radiation-related leukemia, and who folded 1,000 paper cranes for peace. We remember the words of Robert Oppenheimer, considered the father of the atomic bomb, who, as he witnessed the first test of nuclear weapons, spoke the words he recalled from the Bhagavad Gita. "I am become death, the destroyer of worlds." We also invoke the Hiroshima Memorial Senatath, bearing the names of those who died, which expresses a prayer for the peaceful repose of the victims, a belief in enduring grief that transcends hatred, a yearning for genuine lasting world peace, and a pledge on behalf of all humanity, never to repeat the evils of war. As we dedicate this colorful celebration of life and hope for peace, our wish is that all who witness it will be moved to take action, to urge all nations to work for world peace and full nuclear disarmament,
And that concludes the video, as well as public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Katharina Powers and Judy for putting this together. It's absolutely beautiful and stunning. And I will send a copy of that video and of the proclamation to our sister city, Bizin. They made special effort to make sure that the two groups from Menlo Park got a chance to go to Hiroshima and visit the museum there and actually speak to the child of one of the survivors. And it was very moving. It was, I think, a lot of the kids said it was, it was so much more than they expected going out there. So thank you very much for doing the proclamation. Also, Sister City International has asked for a copy of the proclamation, so we can send one to them as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. We'll make sure to take it a copy to them. And thank you, Ms. Adams and Mr. Lynn, for putting together the presentation. It was, it was moving. It was beautiful. Thank you. And if anyone else on council had anything else they wanted to contribute on this item, before we move on.
For those who don't know or remember, former Mayor Peter Otaki's family came from Hiroshima. So it's particularly poignant as well, the connections that are between Menlo Park and Hiroshima.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from UC Berkeley on the Housing Inventory and Local Supply Study from the Facebook Campus Expansion Project Development Agreement. To introduce this item is our principal planner, Mr. Kyle Parata.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, and members of the City Council. I'm here to introduce this item before turning it over to Dr. Karen Chapel at UC Berkeley, who will be making the formal presentation to you tonight. So this presentation is an opportunity for the council to learn about the findings from the Housing Inventory and Local Supply Study, which is a required item from the Facebook Campus Expansion Project Development Agreement. So that development agreement included a number of housing-specific items, one of those being the Housing Inventory and Local Supply Study, which we will be having a presentation on tonight. The focus of that study was to understand the existing conditions within the Bellhaven neighborhood of Menlo Park, the North Fair Oaks neighborhood of unincorporated San Mateo County, and the city of East Palo Alto. So as part of the implementation of the development agreement, Facebook partnered with UC Berkeley's Center for Innovation and the Y Plan Initiative with the Center for Cities and Schools at UC Berkeley. And Dr. Karen Chapel is the lead researcher, and so she'll be doing the following presentation, which will provide an overview of that study and its key findings. In addition, per the development agreement with Facebook, the Housing Inventory and Local Supply Study is intended to inform the Housing Innovation Fund, which is an additional development agreement item, which would use the study, the Housing Inventory and Local Supply Study, excuse me, as a tool to inform actions that could be implemented through that fund. Facebook is required to set aside $1.5 million in seed funding for that fund, and the fund will be structured with an oversight committee who would be responsible for determining what actions the fund would actually support. And that board or committee will be made up of eight members, one of which would be appointed by the City Manager of Menlo Park, one by the City Manager of East Palo Alto, and the six remaining by Facebook itself, appointed by Facebook, excuse me. And so the information item on the agenda tonight also provides more background on the campus expansion project, the development agreement associated with that project, and the next steps for the Housing Innovation Fund. And so that concludes my introduction. Staff is available for presentations or for questions. If not, I will turn it over to Dr. Karen Chapel at UC Berkeley to give the presentation.
Okay, I'll begin if we're all ready. So, good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmembers Muller, Nash, and Carlton. It's really a pleasure to be here and hi again, Kyle, who I've gotten to know a little bit through the course of the study. So I'm a professor and chair of City Regional Planning at UC Berkeley, and was the lead researcher on this study. And I also worked with the Center for Cities and Schools, and Dr. Deb McCoy, who heads that center, will be joining us throughout the presentation, along with a number of youth participants in the study. Kyle, go ahead. Was there, okay, was somebody say something? Okay, Kyle, I'm going to just give you rapid-fire orders to advance slides, okay? So, let's go ahead. So we, we started out realizing that what we were dealing with here was a very significant transformation of the region, really. Really in the last 15 years, but accelerating in the last few years. And this is a quote that the students that we worked with got from an East Palo Alto resident, Jorge, who was observing that the place is the opposite of what it used to be. Next slide. So we engaged in this research process, actually, about, just about three years ago exactly, we started this research process. Facebook brought us in to scope out the study, and we had an extensive scoping process with stakeholders around the region, which I'll talk about in a second. I just wanted to point out that the basic timeline for the study was that we spent the year of 2018 with the Center for Cities and Schools interacting with the Aspire, East Palo Alto, Phoenix Academy, and also the Boys and Girls Club in Bellhaven and Redwood City to, to, to learn more about the area, and really to, to understand what we should look at. What were the issues that conventional data couldn't pick up? So we did a year of that kind of intensive, almost ethnographic research on the, on the region, and also had a lot of help from the students in just walking around blocks. With the students, we walked around every block in the study area to get to know what was going on. And then, in 2019, we spent a year on the, on the data analysis, and the report itself came out in January. So next slide. So this gives you a sense of the scoping process and the engagement we did. We talked with, with 40 different organizations, sometimes multiple people in each organization, sometimes multiple actors over time. They came from community-based organizations, affordable houses, government consultants, just to really, really understand the local view, the local experts on the region. And we heard about a lot of issues. We had a lot of requests for what we should study, and many more than we could possibly address. People wanted us to study displacement. Who had, who had left? Where were they now? People wanted us to look at opportunity sites for affordable housing. People wanted us to look at the job impacts of Facebook. People wanted us to look at what anti-displacement policies would be most effective. So we, we considered all that. And then we, we realized that overall, from, from almost everybody that we talked to, we heard one theme. We want you guys, the researchers, to build local capacity to deal with the housing crisis. So we thought, hmm, how, how are we going to do this? How can we, how can we make a living study that is not just something we'll sit on a shelf, but will, but that will give the people of Menlo Park, of East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, the power to change the, the way, the direction, the direction that the community is going? So, at that point, next slide, we decided, we, that the best way to really get that kind of capacity-building aspect was to engage with Y Plan. And so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Deb McCoy and some of the participants from the Y Plan. And you can go to the next slide.
And Deborah McCoy, you are, have you been promoted to panelist? You can engage your webcam and microphone at this time. Deborah, are you able to engage your webcam or use your microphone? I see that you're off mute. It looks like she's attempting to call in at the moment.
Oh, she's, oh, really? Okay. Rejoining by phone. Should we take any questions now while we're waiting?
Thank you, Dr. Chapel, for your presentation. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Nash?
What was the most interesting thing that you found that you didn't expect?
We, one of the shocking things, actually, we made it the title of the report, was that you would see signs of investment and disinvestment right next to each other. And so you could see this incredible divide in the community between the newcomers, mostly, and, and the, the, you know, the long-term residents. So, yeah, that was, that was a surprise for us to see that geography play out. And then tremendous differences, as you'll see on the maps, between East Palo Alto and the neighborhood of Bellhaven and North Fair Oaks. You have three entirely different places, which is, is really interesting.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to compliment the students who I had a chance to interact with. Two years ago, I was serving as mayor while they were working on this plan with you. So I remember them. I remember the presentation. I remember how thoughtful they were, and it's great to see the plan come to fruition. So, thank you.
That's great, and we do expect them to join us presently, some of them, so.
So Deborah, just checking in again. Were you able to call in or have your microphone available?
So, you know, we can continue on and have her come in at the end, too. Maybe that would be the best at this point.
That would be great.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. Here are, on the next slide, she'll, she'll talk about the Y Plan process when she comes. And here are some of the students who are actually, now some of them are in college, but these are some of the folks you met, Councilmember Muller, who will be speaking to us tonight at the end. Let's keep going. Next slide. So what we decided to study in the end, after we went through this scoping process with all the, all the students and got their perspectives and local knowledge, we decided to really dig into what was going on in the real estate market. And part of the reason we decided this was because we heard stories from the students about real estate speculation going on, and also overcrowding, tremendous overcrowding, a scene of three, four families in a house. And these are the kinds of things that conventional data don't tell you about. The census data doesn't tell you much about overcrowding, often because the people that are overcrowding don't confess it to the census. So we don't have good data on that. And so, so we realized we really needed to dig into what was going on in the, in the real estate market. And then we also had some great data on individual transactions, on homeowners. Kyle gave us some great data from Menlo Park, so we wanted to take advantage of that. So that's what I'll focus on tonight. And then we will, we will end with the students' stories of the, of the neighborhood and ideas about policy. So keep going. Next slide. So our study area, by the way, was the neighborhood of Bellhaven within Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, and the, and North Fair Oaks within unincorporated San Mateo County. And we try and compare what's going on in these three, three communities with each other, and then also a reference community, which we usually use the, the whole county to compare with. And as you know, this is a quite distinct area of the county. So often, the pressures are really felt in these three communities. So you see here, for instance, if you look at rent-burdened households, those paying over 30% of their income for rent, you see that the share is much higher in these communities and particularly Bell Haven. Next slide. We also looked at disinvestment. And this was, again, the students from Aspire and the Boys and Girls Club that walked around the neighborhoods and observed, block by block, property by property, what was going on. And they told us where you had, you know, peeling paint, where you had unkept yards, where you had window coverings that were torn, where you had graffiti, where you had dumping. And that we compiled these findings into the disinvestment index. And what was quite striking here was that the neighborhood of Bell Haven really has quite a bit of disinvestment going on. Actually, we were quite shocked because Facebook is right there. Yet you see some signs of distress. So, next slide. Okay, so we also looked at code violations. So these are actual cases, code violation cases, and the cities and the communities have tracked. And it's, these are citations really for graffiti or trash or other types of issues. And here you can see actually that East Palo Alto of the three communities is the one that's very aggressive with citing the community. Keep going. Next slide. One of the things we're able to look at was absentee ownership. And we had a feeling this was an issue because the students told us about it. Like, that owner, he hasn't been here for years. This is, we haven't seen that family, that's been a rental property for many years. And so we could track this with the Z-tracks data, the Zillow data we were using, which was parcel by parcel. And as you can see, just mapping this out on a block level, you have actually a very high percentage of absentee ownership, even actually throughout a lot of Menlo Park, but also all of the communities do. Next slide. It's 21% absentee ownership in the county, just for comparison, and much higher in this particular area. In terms of investment, we measured a number of different indicators for here. Again, this was the students, a very intensive work. They went and they told us, where are their for-sale signs? Where are their for-rent signs? Where's the renovation going on? Where's their new paint? Where are their fences that have just gone up? And from that, actually, the neighborhood of Bell Haven really pops up, that there's some investment going on there. And so this was really striking to us because Bell Haven, as you recall, was also where we saw a lot of disinvestment indicators. So you have, you know, just very dramatic change going on in Bell Haven. Next slide. This data was from Menlo Park's beautiful building permit data set. We could look at remodels. Actually, we could see that if you think about where the great share of remodels are going on, it's actually in other parts of Menlo Park. It's not in Bell Haven. Next slide. Then we took an overall look at sales prices to see what's going on, what are the trends? And you could see, of course, as we all know, it's going up, up, and up. It dropped a bit with the Great Recession, but Menlo Park is that top line. It's without Bell Haven, it's the rest of Menlo Park. And that's appreciated higher than any other community nearby. But you can see that Bell Haven also, the neighborhood itself, has experienced some increases in time period. Next slide. We also looked at real estate speculation. So what we wanted to do is understand who was actually flipping properties. So where are their properties being flipped? And we define this as being sold twice in a year. And some of them were being sold several times in a year. And it turned out that Bell Haven, of all of our communities, but the neighborhood of Bell Haven was where we saw the highest share, actually, 6% of the properties had been flipped between 2005 and 17. And this is super interesting if you think of from a policy perspective and things you might want to think about taking action on. It's maybe slowing down, figuring out ways to slowing down, to slow down the real estate speculation in this neighborhood. Next slide. So this slide documents the building code violations that are illegal ADUs. So this is just the existence of illegal ADUs or the red tagging of dangerous ADUs. And so you could see here that you have a very high share in the neighborhood of Bell Haven. Next slide. And this slide, this data came from students, again, walking around all of these neighborhoods and looking behind people's houses and trying to figure out, is there an ADU here? And you'll see here, well, Bell Haven's in the blue. You can see here that they found a couple hundred ADUs on the property. Overall, we calculated that 24% of the houses in the neighborhood of Bell Haven have ADUs already. 14% have garages that seem to be used for living. Next slide. And we're almost done with our press. I hope our Y Plan folks can jump on, get ready to jump on. So one of the things that we decided to look at also was Airbnb. And we realized, partly from what the students told us, actually, that there were rooms being rented out in some of these places. And these were the numbers of late in 2019. The numbers could be different now. But what was really striking was how much those rentals cost. So we found that you, there were folks renting one room, a private room in a house in Bell Haven, that were getting $4,118 per room per month, okay? In the average rental price in Bell Haven for Airbnb was $2,200 per month. So that suggests that there's a pressure on this market from possibly, you know, workers earning quite a bit of money that can be those kinds of rentings. We also found that many of these Airbnb listings were from just single owners with multiple listings. In fact, most were from folks that are listing four, five, or eight different places for rent, not just, you know, a mom renting out her extra bedroom, but people doing it systematically. Next slide. So our recommendations, you can read more about them in the report. And I know you guys talk about housing policy a lot, so you've seen these types of recommendations before. I can point to my favorite and I'd be happy to talk about this more in the Q and A. I'm a big advocate for ADU construction. I think you have a lot of talent locally in terms of community land trusts, and there's a lot of potential there. I would love to see something done about the code violation enforcement that is red tagging illegal ADUs. It seems like there should be a viable pathway to legalization for ADUs. That would be really important. And then I would advocate monitoring. I would advocate watching very carefully what's going on in the real estate market. And there are cities that are doing this already. They're a lot bigger than Menlo Park. New York City is the most famous one that has a speculation watch list, but it would not be that hard to do to identify folks that are flipping properties and monitoring that. And then the other issue, again, is regulating Airbnb. And I'm not familiar, maybe you have been working on that issue, but it seems like that is a fertile territory for the city to take action. And finally, we had a recommendation for Facebook as well, which was more cultural competency. Not, we have a terrific staff at Facebook in their policy division, many of whom are with us tonight, but there's thousands, thousands of Facebook employees in the neighborhoods. And many of them have not really learned good ways to interface with the community, shall we say, that they could learn more respectful ways to interact with the people who are there already. So with that, I'd like to turn it over, next slide, to Y Plan. And see if we're ready now.
Thank you, Karen. So at this time, Deb McCoy, as well as Yvette Contreras and Elizabeth Aviles, you guys are all off mute, able to control your own microphones and webcams. For Ashley Barazza, you are off mute, as well as Mia. I'm going to go ahead and send Mia her audio code. And you guys are able to engage your own microphones at this time. And I will hand it back over to you guys. Thanks.
Great. This is Deborah McCoy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. I'm going to start again. Thank you. Thank you, Karen, and honorable council members. It's an honor to be able to join you tonight. I am particularly happy to be able to speak to you now and to really introduce the Y Plan work and amazing Y Plan scholars who worked on this important study. It's hard to believe it's been three years and it's been an incredible collaboration. Just to provide a quick overview on the Y Plan civic learning and action research methodology, what you saw on the previous slide, Y Plan follows a five-step methodology. How we teach city planning or community development at UC Berkeley is how we engage young people and prepare them not only with the process to be genuine critical actors in communities, but with the data and the skill building to be able to bring evidence to their work, which you'll hear about shortly. Y Plan is an acronym. It stands for Youth, Plan, Learn, Act, Now. But it's also a pun, if you will. We've done over 20 years in cities like Menlo Park and many across the country, in the globe, actually, is to engage young people in the questions that Karen presented tonight in the research about why. Why do conditions exist the way they do? And importantly, in very hard ways, why are they so different on one street and so different just a few streets down? So young people engaged in many months of research and data collection. You'll hear the final recommendations now. And what's most important is that the young people not only collect data, understand data, but present visions for how they want their communities to improve. It is incredibly important that you welcomed us to Menlo Park and that Facebook invited us as a private-public partnership at the university to have young people lift their voice up. I think now it's never been as important, in such an unusual time, to really create space to listen to young people. Tonight, you will hear from five or four of the young people, but there were over 50 young people engaged over the past three years in collecting the data that Karen just presented. To start us off, I'm going to invite Yvette to kick us off, sharing her insights about the first recommendation. Yvette?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes, very well.
So I'm presenting the second recommendation, which is to produce more affordable units, which includes ADUs, affordable condos for low-income locals to purchase and rental apartment units. And why we need more of these is because for people like me, I've had to move around multiple times, like in rooms or garages and stuff. And if we were to have ADUs, it'd be way more stable for us as people, like the people that rent who not move around as much. And we just have, like, the kids especially, like, we would have more stable homes to do homework and all of that kind of stuff. And we also want to acknowledge that Facebook did act quickly on this recommendation because they started investing in the nonprofit soup to build new ADUs in the area. And we were just really grateful for that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I will be presenting the first recommendation, which is preserve affordable units by offering assistance to repair rentals in bad condition and exploring community land trust and co-ops. So we think this is a very important recommendation because even though a lot of new buildings are being built and there's more apartments that are being built, a lot of them, we cannot afford. Because of the money our parents make is not enough to actually afford the new buildings, which are more repaired, they're nicer. So what we usually end up doing is every, a lot of people end up going to the older buildings, which they have lived there for many years and are generally in bad condition, but they're still, they're not very cheap, but they're a little better than the newer ones that are being built. And this is really important because a lot of times, even if we, if we, if they end up repairing something, they end up raising their rents. A lot of people are scared that if the building will repair something for the benefit of the building, that the rent will go up. Even when, so that's why a lot of the older buildings are just kind of really messed up. And the tenants are just afraid to ask the landlord to fix some of that old stuff that is not working and we need to work. I remember in one of our interviews, a man in North Fair Oaks said that he hadn't, his building really needed a lot of repairs and his apartment was really bad. It was in bad condition. There was some mold in the building, actually. And they were scared to ask the manager because they were afraid that the rent would increase. So this is one of the reasons that we want to preserve our affordable units, just so we don't have to be forced to move out and we can still have a safe and healthy living condition.
Wonderful. Elizabeth, do you want to present the third recommendation?
Yes. The third recommendation is preserve the culture by building a Placita to spark the local economy and create a space for locals to gather and celebrate Latino culture. So one of my colleagues decided to come up with the idea, La Placita, to have an area to keep an identity of who we are today. We noticed that East Palo Alto has became more gentrified as other companies are opening new housings. However, they are focused on and prioritizing on their employees. So we noticed that a lot of low incomers are moving out and we just want to have an affordable idea, like a condo that's affordable for low incomers so that they can stay here and make it who we are today as we make East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Wonderful. And Mia, are you able to log on?
Yes.
Wonderful. Yes, very well.
I'm presenting the fourth recommendation, which is protecting tenants from unjust eviction. This is important because unjust evictions lead to an increase in the homeless population and lead families to move into their cars or move into a home with multiple families in order to make ends meet. This leads to overcrowding, which is a potential health crisis, especially in these times of COVID. Because if one person becomes infected, it leads to the spread of the entire household. And then people can't work, they don't have an income, and then they can't pay rent. And it creates this never-ending cycle of families having to move out time after time again. Not only this, but many times families have to move into homes with bad conditions, like mold or broken appliances. And they have no other choice because they can't afford another place. And landlords take advantage of this because they know there is a high demand for housing. Landlords also take advantage by not telling tenants about their rent protections or telling them wrong information, which is why we must educate tenants on their housing rights. And this is why we also need a committee that is committed to educating tenants and landlords on rent protection and hold landlords accountable when they don't do so.
Terrific. Thank you so much. And Natalie, I know had to hop off the call, but this last recommendation was really representing all of you all and all the and all the 50 young people involved in this research. Would one of you, Ashley or Yvette, like to present this last final recommendation on behalf of all of the young people?
I could do it. Yvette?
Great. Go.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so our second proposal, I'm going off of what Mia was talking about, about a committee. We were thinking of that as, oh, we believe that the community needs someone to oversee everything that happened. We need to have a youth committee to be able to keep check of stuff that sometimes like the council may be overly occupied with, that they need other help. And then that's where we would come, because we need to help each other be accountable. And just as an example, we, that, an example of this were the ADUs that Facebook invested in because of our work and this research. Funding soup, the nonprofit organization that helped build the ADUs. And this would help raise money, funding and building new affordable ADUs. So that's why we believe in the Youth Advisory Council.
Terrific. I believe that concludes a brief, quick synopsis of the young Y Plan scholars' recommendations. And we would turn this back over to the council. Thank you so much and well done, everybody.
Thank you for the presentation and all this great information. And to our, hopefully, our future Youth Advisory Council, Yvette, Ashley, Elizabeth, Mia, and Natalie. I appreciate all the work that you put into and all the information that you have shared and especially your recommendations to the council.
Mayor Taylor, this is Kyle jumping in here. We actually have a video that was going to be played at the end that I can start now if we can do that before moving off of the presentation completely. Sorry about that.
Yes, please.
It's not quite playing yet, is it?
We can see it, but it hasn't begun. Hey, Kyle, I'm going to take over being presenter. I think I might be able to try and show that.
Okay, sounds good.
Growing up here was a bit of a challenge. My family had to move a lot because of the rent. There are 13 of us living in a house together. I sleep in the living room with two of my brothers. There can be days where I feel trapped. Y Plan is such a big opportunity.
It's an educational strategy to engage K-12 students and young people in transforming their cities. In City Hall, we spend so much time talking to constituents, trying to problem solve. But so many of those issues are really relevant to young people. And yet, young people are so rarely invited to the table. We work directly with schools who are really trying to develop an authentic project-based learning for their young people. The housing crisis here in the Peninsula and in the Bay Area overall cannot be understated. One of the biggest issues that young people identified is the levels of overcrowding.
We noticed that a lot of families have people living in garages. So we came up with this idea of converting garages into ADUs.
An ADU is an auxiliary dwelling unit. So taking places that unfortunately too many families are already living in and making them a place of dignity. The young people really identified the role of both the city and a company in solving the problem. We need to change zoning, but also we need the investment and capital of companies as wealthy as Facebook.
So you guys, have you been to the ports? Have you seen the shipping containers?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what these are made out of.
Y Plan makes me feel very empowered. I just think to myself, am I dreaming? I'm just a kid that's just trying to push through life. But I realize that officials, they're here to listen to me. I do belong here. I always think to myself, if there's something that you can dream, just do it. Don't hold yourself back.
When young people can be active participants in changing their current circumstances, then the sky's the limit, right? Then the college is next and careers are next. And believing in our democracy is next.
Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Paradas, that was at the end of the presentation.
Yes, that concludes the presentation from UC Berkeley. And I believe they're available for questions and staff is as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. McCoy and Dr. Shaple. Are there any follow-up questions from the council? Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Nash.
Betsy, why don't you go first? Thank you. I was wondering if we could get a definition again of the absentee, absentee landlords, because I'm just really surprised at how, what a high percentage it is. And so exactly who are we, how are you defining that?
What we look at is, actually, we look at your tax records. We look at the database with tax records. And we look at where the mailing address is different from the homeowner address, the property address, and we do, we estimate ownership like that. So in some cases, these are landlords that have moved to other cities and are renting out their property. In some cases, it's mom. Mom owns the house and the kids are living there or some other, you know, grandma's living there. So it could be within the family. It's just that the homeowner is not present on the property.
So it would include people who are renting out their house?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Karen. Thanks for doing all this. I think it's really interesting information for us to consider. And it looks like it was a lot of fun doing it as well. And thank you so much. I don't know if the students are still listening, but I'm so glad that you got the opportunity to do this because we do want more kids to get involved in government and their community. And hopefully, this won't be the last time that you come in and speak to council because it's really important that we, that you do feel empowered because you are and we want to hear from you. It's frustrating for council sometimes that we tend to hear from the same people over and over again. And we worry about the tail wagging the dog. So it's important for us to have fresh people come and present these things to us and for us to go out as well. And kind of to address Councilmember Nash, what you just said. We found before, I remember, that the house was owned by someone's grandma and they had moved someplace else. And it was grandma's house and they don't necessarily want to sell it, so they rent it out. And that it's, as you said, it's a lot of mom's house, grandma's house situations where they're living abroad, meaning in another town or another state, but have the intention to maybe move back someday. That's kind of some of the examples that we've seen. The Airbnb, I thought, was really interesting because you say that you see, most of the houses are one owner with multiple listings. And in some research that I saw by the Bay Area Council, they said the same thing. And they said the result in when these things get counted as to how much is being rented, that it's very difficult, that they felt very strongly that the numbers that are published are too high because one house will get counted at least once because they'll be on different listings. So it's interesting that you found that, too. I'd love to follow up with you later to go into more detail, how much of an issue you really think that is because I keep hearing from each piece of research I look at, how completely inaccurate it is to find out what's actually on Airbnb or what actually is being done. And one of the things that Bay Area Council found is that where the person's still living in the house and they're renting out a room, that that actually keeps people in the homes, that that's not a, it's not a displacement. And so a lot of people think, oh, we have this much Airbnb. That's terrible. They're displacing homes. Where in fact, without the person being able to rent out that room, they might not be able to age in place or they might not be able to keep their home. And I was just wondering if that had been taken into consideration at all in the work that you were doing?
Yeah, I actually really appreciate that point. And I have told Airbnb before that they should take this opportunity to do economic development and actually train folks to be good landlords and earn some income. So, and it's clear that this is helping some people get by. And so I'm actually not an advocate of banning Airbnb in any way. I just think the city should tax it. You know, I don't know if you're collecting the transient occupancy tax on Airbnb, but you know, certainly, that's what I would do is just so that you at least are getting something for it that you can give back to the taxpayers.
We are, but we've done a little bit of a knockback on that just to try and help people as they're getting through with all the COVID issues. Also, to get on the ADU, I was really surprised when we worked on this before. We bent over backwards. We were letting people grandfather in. Because in particular, where you've got, and sure, it must be hard for the kids to determine where there's a garage. And sometimes you don't know someone's living in there until I've walked by and seen the door open and been surprised. There's actually someone living in there. And then you notice their giant extension cords going into the place with the space heater. And it terrifies me when they're there with a baby. Is this going to burn down? And as a city, we want people to make those legal. What I've found is a lot of reasons why they don't isn't necessarily the money to do it. It's that they will then be reassessed for their taxes. And as people, whether they're getting older or different parts of their life, they don't want to have that extra tax burden where they're then have to rent it out to be able to make their tax burdens. And also, people are not allowed to do short-term lets for ADUs. And the protections we have for renters, which are good protections, then sometimes have the unintended consequence of people become worried about renting it out and then having someone that maybe there's a personality conflict and they're so close to where you live, having that obligation and having difficulty as a homeowner, having to deal with that on a personal level. And I was just wondering, because I think ADUs are very much an answer across all of Menlo Park because in places where maybe we're not going to be putting in big apartment buildings, people can be inspired. I know one lady did a beautiful ADU in her backyard and she rents out the house. And then she has the money to live in the neighborhood, near her friends and her community. But now she's got the money to go and travel and visit her grandkids. And so what do you think are the best ways of addressing these issues with ADUs? What can we do to make the decision easier for people to have them in their home, next to their home?
Yeah, you raise a lot of issues there in that. And you know, I think, so, you know, I think we want to make sure that people's housing is safe and of high enough quality to live in. And so there's been some model programs that provide a pride loan and then loans and then also address the property tax issue. And in order to keep low-income homeowners stable, there's been some interesting partnerships. Maybe you're aware of them. Santa Cruz partnered with Habitat for Humanity. Habitat builds the, builds the ADU in the elderly homeowner's yard. The homeowners either move into that ADU or Habitat helps manage it and provides it. It covers the rental themselves. Because often, older homeowners are not comfortable, as you mentioned, going into the rental market. So an intermediary like Habitat or Hello Housing, I think, can find a way to make it easier for homeowners that are nervous about renters.
Do you think that maybe it's a time when we need to start speaking to our state legislators since the taxing is more of a state issue on having certain exemptions for ADU? Since many of our legislators are very pro-housing, this might be a way. I don't know. What are your thoughts about addressing that aspect? Because I've heard that consistently as an obstacle.
Yeah, so you, maybe it could be tacked on as an amendment to that. There's an ADU finance bill at the legislature right now. I'm trying to remember if it's Bloom or Ting. But it's a bond bill and something like that would be a great addition. So it's a bill that intends to get financed for low-income homeowners so that they can easily, more easily build ADU, even if they don't have high income. They have a lot of equity in their property and so there's an opportunity to build. And so that's the sort of thing that we ought to get passed at the state. The state having legislated and fixed all the problems with physical feasibility is now moving on to financial feasibility, which is about time because that's the major barrier that's left.
Excellent. Thank you. I will look into those bills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I'll keep my comments briefer. I wanted to say to the young adults, it's, because we call you students, but you're young adults now. And it's awesome to see you on this multi-year journey. It's excellent work and I just want to thank you for the amount of time that you've put into this over the years and for sticking with it. The insights here in the report are important and they're rich. And this is going to be a document I'm sure we're going back to and looking at as we do our public policy work. I'm also excited candidly, beyond the substantive work that demonstrated leadership that you've shown in your recommendations and thinking about others and about how to expand the vision of the council and include diverse voices. It's, you've built a strong foundation, not only in the substantive work you provided, but also within the leadership of thinking about how to include and empower others. It's impressive. And so I just wanted to share those thoughts and looking forward to actually using this document in the future and the insights you provide.
Thank you. And just for the public, I just wanted to remind you that there is an informational item that's a written report, item L3, on this, on Y Plan's presentation and all the information that they found. I also wanted to share that I met Dr. Shaple, I can't believe it's been three years, and was one of the guest community stakeholders that was interviewed in the very beginning to see what your work has evolved into. And the information that was provided for me, I'm going back and rereading it because there is a lot of detail there in its information that community members have asked for in the past. And so I'm looking forward to this document not only affecting policy at the council level, but also providing input for all these other studies that have been done in the past that have missed this information, which has been key to how we that have missed this information, which has been key to how we create policy. So thank you. Was there any other? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Actually, you were kind of instrumental in shaping what data we gathered. Because we did get the chance to speak to you at the beginning. I think you were on the Housing Commission at the time. Or just
No, I was I was say, actually, I was on the I wasn't on a commission. But you interviewed me just as a community member.
Right.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Combs, I wasn't sure if you had your hand up, if you had some questions. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So when you were talking about the Airbnbs, I wrote down that single owners with multiple listings. And I took that as a single owner would have several different houses. But it sounds like perhaps it was it several different houses or their house is listed on several different platforms?
No, it was I I to be clear, it's all on Airbnb. You would have you would have people listing different properties all on Airbnb.
Thank you. And then the other question that I had was just, did you perhaps not in the it's not as big an issue in Bell Haven, North Fair Oaks and East Palo Alto? But did you come across vacant homes? That's originally what I thought you meant when you were talking about absentee owners was that the these were owned, but the they were vacant. Was that an issue at all, or?
Not much, just probably because of the time period. I you know, I think maybe a couple of years earlier, you would have seen quite a bit, you know, especially after the Great Recession. But I think that the occupancy was quite high, according to the data we saw.
So I'm actually thinking. There are homes that, very honestly, when I was campaigning two years ago, I would went door to door. And there were, this is in a different area, I'm close to downtown. But there were was a surprising number of homes where it appeared that the homes were there and they were not being lived in. And I'm assuming and I know that sometimes it's because someone lives over in other areas much of the year, but that's more of what I was referring to.
Yeah, absentee ownership or dual dual homeowners. Yeah, yeah, my mother used to live in Menlo Park six months a year.
Any comments about, I know that or I believe that San Francisco has been trying to regulate that some. Is that an area that's worth looking into or generally for housing?
Yeah, I think so. It's not, to my knowledge, it's not usually the smaller jurisdictions like Menlo Park who do this. You you'll see in in a place like Vancouver or New York, you know, you'll see. So Vancouver has a vacancy tax that is just is, you know, to to prevent this. Because there's so many speculators and overseas investors that buy property and then leave it empty. So, you know, if it does become an issue in Menlo Park where you're you're fairly sure this is what's going on. You know, I you know, it's something that would be worth looking into. Or even just doing a study on absentee ownership, like what is actually going on here? You know, I guess there's many different factors at work, as we've said.
Thank you.
Ms. Herron, do we need to take public comment on this item or can that wait?
We can take it now, or if you wanted to take a break, we can take it when we return. However, you want to handle that.
Okay, it would be great to take public comment after our break. And just thank you. And just to a last last round of of if there are any last round of questions for Dr. Shaple before we take our break, I just want to check in to make sure everyone was able to ask their questions or make their comments. Councilmember Nash?
I was just wondering if it would be possible to take public comment now while the Dr. Shaple and some of the other folks are here rather than after break?
The one reason why I taking public comment after the break is because Mother Nature calls.
Sounds good.
Okay, and Dr. Shop, Dr. Shaple, do you do you mind having your dinner as well and coming back during public comment?
Sure, I can return.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. And and Dr. McCoy, if I if you have the ability to come back as well, not sure if she is still on the line. But that would be great.
I am. I am happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. And we usually take somewhere around 20 minutes for a break. So it's seven forty three. So we will definitely be back in 20 minutes. So I will see you then.
Thank you. As a reminder, City Council, please disengage webcams and microphones and only turn on your webcam when you return. Thank you.
Welcome back, Mayor Taylor, Mayor Combs, members of the City Council. With all members present on our virtual days, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and welcome back. And I want to start off with public comment. So Ms. Heron, if you could call for public comment on this item.
Can do. So for any member of the public who wishes to comment on item H2, please engage the hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can address the City Council at this time. Okay, I do have a hand raise. Karen Grove, Karen, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great. So I am Karen Grove, I live in Menlo Park. I'm a member of the Housing Commission and I'm also the Chair of the Grove Foundation and I'm speaking solely as myself, I want to be clear about that. But I do want to say that the Grove Foundation has been funding in the three communities that were part of this study for decades. And this study was really good, especially the student interviews and the student on the ground data collection. It really reflects the community that I know through my work at the Grove Foundation. I wanted to make sure that this study gets used. And so I wanted to know, ask you to discuss the way the city intends to use the report. I recommend sharing it with the Housing and Planning Commission and the other commissions, and with the public. At a minimum, it deserves its own like featured page at the city website, people should be able to access it easily. And then how will this study impact the council's work plan and priorities? In 2017, when the City Council studied anti-displacement strategies, which could also be called neighborhood stabilization strategies, several were ruled out very quickly, some including rent stabilization and just cause eviction, which the Y Plan Youth put very high on their priority list. And I want to lift that up and note that the study found that EPA has a lower poverty rate than Bellhaven. And I just wonder if it's because people have housing stability in East Palo Alto and can work their way out of poverty. So just something to think about, we may want to revisit those priorities. And then another strong recommendation by the youth was to increase the housing accessibility, affordability for rent and for ownership for, and what they mean by affordable, they were specific, is below 35% area median income. So that's ELI and V, very low and extremely low income. And the best way to do that is to donate land, and the city owns land near our Caltrain station. We have a huge civic center, and I would ask us to consider donating a portion of that land to affordable housing that is deeply affordable for extremely low and very low income residents. And maybe a state-of-the-art library could be built on the ground floor of that housing or right next door. But really center the purpose being making housing deeply affordable for people in Menlo Park, ownership and rental. And then finally, I was wondering if we could move up item L3 to follow this item since they're so closely related, and I have something to say about item L3 as well. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter will be Pam Jones. Pamela Jones, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Good evening, Council. I just, I'm deeply grateful for the work of UC Berkeley and particularly the youth of Y Plan. This is the first time I felt like a study reflected where I live. And their capture of the community is very clear, it came from them having boots on the ground and also their lived experience. And we pay attention to youth's lived experience far more than we do adults' lived experience. I just, I can't commend them enough, how they included multiple recommendations throughout the study as well as in their summaries, and they were all very clear and fact-based. This information must be used sooner than later by the city of Menlo Park. And so I concur with what Karen Grove's comments. We have to include outreach to the public. Why the public doesn't know about this study is a real mystery to me, but it's important that they do. I hope to see the Council put this on an agenda item sooner than later and have extensive discussion on all of the ramifications in this document. And that includes engaging the commissions, who are the experts on zoning, housing, environmental, and we've seen from the EQC what can be done when we allow a commission to do what it should be designed for. I have some very specific recommendations coming from this, and that's we need to immediately update the evictions, foreclosures, absentee landlords, and real estate speculation from 2018 to 2020. We need to immediately maintain a watch list for evictions, foreclosures, absentee landlords, real estate speculators, and then that needs to be updated annually. Develop a community land trust to buy foreclosures to maintain a higher level of affordable housing stock. Apply appropriate measures to protect housing in flood zones. They even brought up putting houses on stilts. And I know for myself, that just raising my house was financially prohibitive, so I have a rubber dinghy on the side of the house. We need to develop a program, a redevelopment program for home repair assistance for seniors, making sure that we prevent unintentional consequences. And we need apartment vacancy rate. We have vacant apartments and people have need of housing. Those vacant apartments could be used, especially if they're vacant more than 90 days, they could be converted to affordable apartments, and I'm talking about affordable at all levels. Community outreach, and I see my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Jen Wallison. Jen, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Good evening, City Council, Jen Wallison, Menlo Park resident. I want to echo what Karen Grove and Pam Jones said about the teens and how hearing their lived experiences was really powerful, and I would encourage them to continue doing their citizen science and to remain researchers their whole life. I think we measure what matters, and so we really need to keep collecting this data, asking the community to share their observations with policymakers so that we know what's really going on in the community. As was stated, overcrowding is under-reported, and sometimes it really takes community members to let us know what's going on. I was just shocked hearing Ms. Pam Jones talk about the fact that she has a rubber dinghy next to her house because of sea level rise. And I think the teens calling out the fact that homes perhaps should be built on stilts is something that we really need to listen to in terms of how interconnected all of these issues are. I know you just passed a very aggressive climate action plan, and I think especially as you move into thinking about the priorities that you have going forward, we need to keep that top of mind and remember why we need to take this aggressive action and who is going to be most impacted. And it's these vulnerable populations, especially those who are younger. And so I just wanted to remind you that all of these issues, and remind the community that all of these issues are very much interrelated, and thank you again for highlighting this important topic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin G. Kevin, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks for having me. Yeah, I'm super new to this whole report. I, you know, I wasn't aware before today that it, you know, the work was being done or anything like that. So I mostly wanted to express my appreciation to the Berkeley folks and the students for working on it. I work with houseless folks in San Francisco, and just based on my anecdotal experience, most of the things they outlined in the report from the, you know, the analysis of the current situation to the proposed solutions and everything in between really tracks with my personal experiences. There are certainly, you know, peculiarities of, you know, what's happening here and why, but generally just this issue of, you know, tech company involvement in local areas and displacement and gentrification and everything else, there are a lot of commonalities there as well. And I agree with the previous commentators that, you know, a study this robust and this revealing deserves to be used, so I hope that it will be. and this revealing deserves to be used, so I hope that it will be. I was just kind of furiously reading through this 115-page report in the break we just had. And it seems like the main next step will be the creation of this Housing Innovation Fund that will be primarily run by Facebook. And if I'm understanding it correctly, they'll be using this report in some way to guide future actions that will be taken with that $1.5 million fund. I would imagine that one of the primary reasons this study was so effective is that community stakeholders were given a leadership role in executing it. And I would hope that in the creation of the Housing Innovation Fund, that community stakeholders are again given, hopefully, a leadership role. But at the minimum, a seat at the table. It looks like the city manager has the ability to appoint one member to this fund. I'm not sure if that means like a city council member or just somebody from the community. But either way, I think having community stakeholders occupy a central role in the discussion will determine how effective that innovation fund is able to be. So I hope that's something that we can do in some capacity. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for everyone that provided public comment. And going back to Ms. Grove's question as far as moving this item, moving the item up, L3, to discuss it right now. And because of, well, my own beliefs are that because this item, I believe, does need to be on as regular business so that there can be an action taken behind it after council discussion, it will be added to an agenda. Not sure if it'll be on August 25th or the meeting following, but definitely within the next two to four weeks. And just wanted to open it up to the council, what their thoughts were on that, or if you wanted to discuss it now. No thoughts from anyone on that? Councilmember Nash?
I'll jump in. I would very much like to see it on a future agenda so we can discuss it in depth. I think that it's an excellent idea to have it on the website, and it should be on the agendas of most, if not all, of our commissions as appropriate. So I think it's something that definitely touches most commissions and would be very beneficial just for the background that it provides. So I think it's outstanding work and very, very critical.
Councilmember Nash? I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious what professional staff thought, how they thought they might want to use it. I don't know who would respond to that from professional staff, but that would be my question, is how did professional staff see using this document?
Well, I guess that's why we put it on the agenda, to hear the council's thoughts and how you'd like us to proceed. This doesn't come to you tonight with a recommended action plan. So if you want to add this to your list of priorities, then maybe that would be the best place to have further discussions. We are going to have the Bay Area Economics Housing Study on an upcoming agenda, so we could add this item as additional background for that discussion as well.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is like, how, not when we will see it, but how it would be used. Right? Like, to say we're going to send it to all the commissions to look at or to say that we are, but like, what's the, how would we use it? Like, what's the, if it comes to us in a later agenda, like, how would it be used as an action item? How should we be thinking of it? Or are we just, right now, just want everybody to understand the material is baseline material?
I believe that having this information will help us decide what that means. And Ms. Jerome Robinson, I see you came on screen, so I think you were ready to answer that before me.
Well, no, I was going to defer to you, Madam Mayor. I mean, since it's the council asking to have it come back as an action item, I guess I'd be very interested in what kind of action you have in mind.
Well, I believe that a part of it, a part of the questions that I've had over the past year and a half has been just around, what's the data? What's happened to communities that have been impacted, whether it was negative or positive, by land use, by our land use changes, by zoning? And so for me, I see that information helpful as how to move forward. There are a few things that has happened since I've been on council, and that is the tenant relocation ordinance. We were in discussion about ADUs and also about taxing Airbnbs. There's also the housing element that's coming up that includes the RENA. And so to me, having specific information about Menlo Park, not regional information, but specific to Menlo Park, is helpful for me in understanding how we need to, or what we can do policy-wise to help improve the quality of life for residents in Menlo Park and hopefully prevent people from being displaced.
It sounds like we're going to take it and use it to provide to all the commissions as background information for future decision-making and not revisit anything right now, but take matters as they come to us and have this as a tool. Is that what the intent is? Or is it that we're going to be revisiting something that we've done in the past? And that's all I was, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I was just trying to figure out, in the context of what we're talking about in the next two to four weeks, how should I be viewing the document in preparation? So it sounds like it's going to be a foundational document to be used, and we're going to talk about how we use that in our planning process. Is that?
Yes, and that, just thinking about the previous displacement studies that have been provided to Menlo Park, paid for, I mean, paid for by the developer and by consultants that we've used in the past, there hasn't been enough information that has answered questions that I've had around who's been displaced, what's happening in communities in Menlo Park, and how we're being affected, especially renters. So for me, we need information, we need data to know how to move forward. And so for me, information like this would be helpful in making policy choices around the tenant relocation ordinance, making policy choices around, or policy decisions around updating the housing element. So because it's specific to Menlo Park, it's not coming from the state, it's coming from a study specific to Menlo Park. And then also because there is funding available specific to Menlo Park and the region around housing. And without any background information, it makes it difficult to put something in place that's actually going to benefit someone in Menlo Park. So for me, that's where my position is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand now what the intent is. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted, I think it's incredibly important information, sort of as a framework and a background, and in large part because it is so Menlo Park-specific, well, Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, Bellhaven, but it's so specific to our region for both the Planning Commission, the Housing Commission, Complete Streets Commission, the EQC, but I also think it's something that it should be certainly available and promoted to everyone in the community, but especially on commissions. Because I think it is, one of the things that I'm hearing from several commissions right now is just the desire to have more specific history of Menlo Park, background to Menlo Park, be able to put some of the decision-making that's being asked, or I guess not decision, but the commissions, but essentially that, just making recommendations. I think it's incredibly beneficial to have this sort of context. And I know I personally need to read it more thoroughly. And I also am very interested in discussing or hearing more about the Housing Innovation Fund and what is happening there, sort of just generally having some time to really discuss it.
I have a question for Mr. Perata, if anyone was here from the Facebook team.
Yes, I believe there were a few members of the Facebook team with us earlier, and I think they may still be on. So I think if you have specific questions for Facebook, I believe Juan Salazar was on at one point. And then Maya and Anu, who I've been working with on this implementation of this item tonight. So I believe some of them still may be here. I don't have that up right in front of me, but...
I do see that Juan Salazar is still here.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Mayor Taylor, thank you for reminding us. I was remiss in thanking Facebook for your part in making sure that this was created as well, and I want to make sure that you feel appreciated. Thank you very much for facilitating this creation.
And then I believe also that the Y Plan team, well, at least Dr. McCoy and then also Dr. Shappel are still here, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. So if there were any other questions from the council for that team, I don't know if anyone had any other questions, say. Okay. All right, well, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in this presentation and provided the information to the council. Thank you for coming back and being available for any follow-up questions. And then also thank you to Facebook and Facebook's staff that were here on the line, just in case there were any questions from council. I know that Ms. Kaufman on our team, on our staff with Menlo Park, is on vacation at this time, so she wouldn't have been able to answer any questions, which is why I asked if anyone from the Facebook team was here, just in case. So if there aren't any other questions on this item, we will definitely be bringing this back as a regular business item in the very near future. And if there...
So I just want clarity about that. Does it need to be on as a single regular agenda item? Or can we add it as background for the Bay Area Economic Study that we're bringing back to the council? There's no, as I understand it, there's no specific action we're requesting from the council on this study.
So with BAE, would that be informational on and as a regular item?
It would be regular.
Are there any thoughts about that? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I don't have thoughts about that. I do have a clarifying question, which I've had in OAS. One of the recommendations, I think the last one, was some sort of youth advisory council. Is that the same as the commission we established, or is that different? And just since we're on that topic, where does the youth commission stand? Obviously, I know there is a pandemic that began since we officially established that and now. And I appreciate that it hasn't been a priority, but I just wanted some clarity on that, since we're still on the topic.
So we have been working on the formation of the youth commission. It was always slated to start in September. And Adrian Lee Bird is our key delegate for that. And she's available. Adrian, do you want to answer Councilmember Vice Mayor Combs' question? And so while she's joining us...
Hi there. And I actually just sent an email because I was really excited about that presentation also. But we are sending applications out next week and starting outreach to the schools and a lot of the after-school programs and the youth groups that we work with through the library. And so we will be launching this fall, which is great. We're on time. We're going to be starting off virtual, of course, but I'm really excited to pass the information on the presentation to our coordinator that's handling it, just to make sure that they bring some of that work into their projects this year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
I don't have strong feelings, but it does sound like the Bay Area report and this report complement one another. And so it might benefit having those conversations at the same time. So I would support staff's suggestion that we review them together as a regular item. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
So then I'll take that as direction, silence is consent, to bring it back as part of the Bay Area study.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is regular business, item J1, Adopt a Resolution 6578 Authorizing the Permanent Installation of Turn Restrictions in the Willow's Neighborhood.
Mayor Taylor, I want to confirm, you want to reorder the agenda and move to regular opposed to consent?
Oh. The answer is no. I would not like to reorder.
You got it.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
My pleasure.
The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Item I1 is to accept city council meeting minutes for June 23rd and July 14th, 2020. And on this item, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Mayor Taylor, before I call for public comment, I do just want to reiterate that there were some edits made prior to the meeting. It can be found in the handouts in the top right side of your screen. And Councilmember Nash, I do believe, has a couple more comments on that. Let me call for a public comment on this item, and then we can return it to the dais. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I1, our consent calendar, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Judy. I actually, in the edits for July 14th, item F1, which was about the Climate Action Plan, I neglected to cross out one extra word, and that was, reflect should also be crossed out. So it says, "Update action number one to explore the conversion rather than to reflect, explore the conversion." See, that's my only additional edit. Thank you.
Thank you. City Councilmember Nash, that will be reflected in the final minutes if approved by city council.
Thank you. And if there aren't any other comments on this, on this item, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar by City Councilmember Nash. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Carlton by roll call vote? Oh.
Actually, I have a comment.
Oh, okay.
All right. I'm happy to second, but I did actually have a comment. On J3, which is the emergency order, I have a suggestion for something that we might consider, and I don't know if it's appropriate to consider it now or to put it forward as something that we consider for the future. We've had a lot of phone calls, both pro and con, about how we handle on-street parking. And currently, people are able to get a permit, and the permit is, you're allowed so many days a year of that permit. And I was going to put forward that some people... forward that some people, I realize that we have the law for safety, but some people have multiple kids returning home because their college is closed and they're having to zoom in, and there are extenuating circumstances. And I was going to suggest, as a way of finding a middle ground to help people, that we expand the number of days that people can have a permit from, I think it's 45 days, to maybe six months, so that where people have a situation where they really need to have that parking because of COVID, they would be allowed to do so. And I don't know if that is agendized as part of the emergency services for us to talk about now, or if we want to take that up at a later date. But that's a suggestion I have, to make life easier for those people that are having difficulties because of COVID with the on-street parking. Because I appreciate that it needs to be enforced for safety reasons, but we do have, in many cases, extenuating circumstances.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And just for clarification on the record, you're referring to item J3, which is the COVID update?
Yes.
Okay. We will be taking that item as soon as we get to our regular business. Right now, we're just looking at item I1.
Okay.
Perfect. So the motion on the floor to approve item I1, the consent calendar, I have a motion by City Councilmember Nash, a second by City Councilmember Carlton, by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller?
Hi.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is regular business. On regular business, this part of regular business, there will be no staff presentations. This new agenda heading is for regular business items with no staff presentations. The city council is asked to take item, take action on each item. First item is J1, Adopt a Resolution Number 6578, authorizing the permanent installation of turn restrictions in the Willows neighborhood. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and take public comment. So Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public has a public comment on item J1 regarding the turn restrictions in the Willows neighborhood, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council. This time, I do see a few hands. Our first public commenter will be Julia Forbes, that will be followed by Penelope Wang. However, Penelope, it doesn't look like you have a microphone. So while Julie is providing her comment, if you want to see if you can engage a microphone or a headset. So again, I am opening the mic for Julia Forbes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members of the city council. I would like to provide a viewpoint that hasn't gotten a lot of airtime on the other commissions. And I live on O'Keefe Street, and I've lived here for over 20 years, and I've been through several iterations of traffic calming in the Willows. It's a really tough neighborhood, given our geography and our closeness to 101 and the access to both the Dunbarton Bridge and Stanford commuters, et cetera. So it's a tough one. But most of the vocal responses to the no right turn restrictions, understandably, have been from those folks who have had traffic alleviated on their streets, including Chester and Durham. And I want to provide the perspective that from the data that the consultant gave, I wasn't really convinced that cut-through traffic was actually being reduced. What I experienced as a commuter is that the cut-through traffic is merely being rerouted from those streets onto Gilbert to exit Willow Road and onto Woodland to exit to University. And I'm one of those unfortunate commuters that actually works in the evening, and I'm part of that commute traffic, and I need to get to 101 to do my commute. Before the return restrictions were in place, sometimes it would take me up to 15 minutes to get out to 101 or to University or Willow to get to 101 out of the neighborhood. But when the return restrictions were put in place, all that cut-through traffic was redirected to those two exits. And it now takes, well, not during COVID, pre, excuse me, pre-COVID, it could take me up to 30 minutes sometimes to get out of the neighborhood. So it, my commute has, the worst part of my commute is trying to get out of the Willows neighborhood. And I so appreciate those people who live close to Willow Road, for whom the traffic has been alleviated and their quality of life has been improved. But I don't believe that these restrictions are actually resolving the problem of cut-through traffic. They're merely just redirecting the traffic, and other people are being impacted in negative ways. I wish we could come up with a way to actually reduce the cut-through traffic instead of just deciding who's going to take the burden in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And Penelope, it still looks like you don't have an engaged microphone, so I will return to you. Our next public commenter is Amar Maragon. Amar, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Amar, are you able to address the city council at this time? Okay, Amar, I will also return to you. Our next public commenter is Chris DeCarty. Chris, you are off mute and able to unmute yourself and address the city council at this time.
Good evening, city council, and thank you for your consideration. I'm Chris DeCarty. I'm a 17-year resident of the Willows. I'm on the planning commission, but I'm speaking only for myself this evening. I first want to thank the staff for their support in this work. There is so much going on in this city right now and has been. They've done a terrific job, both setting up the temporary turn restrictions, also with their report and their recommendation. And I wholeheartedly support their recommendation for making them permanent. I do that for multiple reasons. As the previous speaker said, it's hard to remember, but pre-COVID and without the turn restrictions, we had an extraordinary problem with cut-through traffic. Speeding through parts of our neighborhood, we're making it dangerous for people to be able to walk in our own community. And in other parts of our neighborhood, traffic that was so backed up that people could not get to their homes, had to park their cars blocks and blocks away, walk 15 minutes to get home, and then go later on to get their car to come back into their own driveway. It was not helpful for safety, not helpful for quality of life, not helpful for businesses with people who wanted to visit in our community. You now fast forward to after I was part of a group that helped sign petitions that got dozens and dozens of residents. Frankly, it's one of the simplest organizing things I've ever been part of, with the extraordinary support for doing something. And working with the city to have a fairly simple and surgical solution that has worked. It has increased the quality of life in our neighborhood, it's cut the cut-through traffic, it has reduced speeding, it's been, made it possible for people to get into their homes. And I too live on the bay side of Gilbert Avenue and have not had the same experience that our previous speaker did. What happens is you now have to backtrack to Gilbert to go over to Willow to get back over to 101, but everybody has to. And so whatever backup was there, you just slot into in that way. It's a minor inconvenience that has not made a difference for me or my family in the times we've had to do that reverse commute at rush hour, and been extraordinarily beneficial for the rest of our neighborhood. I think this type of solution is fantastic. I think it's surgical, I think it's simple, and I think there are other neighborhoods that have been long-suffering with cut-through traffic that could also benefit from this type of approach. And I applaud the city for their effort in making it happen, and encourage you to adopt these as permanent restrictions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. I am going to be returning to Amar. Amar?
I love the council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. It looks like Amar might have disconnected. So Amar, I will come right back to you after our next speaker, Brian Gilmer. Brian, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to speak to you in support of approving the turn restrictions. I think this is about the sixth or seventh time I've spoken to the city council on this topic. And I can say that before we put the turn restrictions in, traffic was very, very bad. I live on O'Keefe Street in the block right off of Willow Road. And during the, there were times even before the bridge construction started, during the bridge construction, it was virtually impossible to get in or out of my driveway for about two to three hours a day. The turn restrictions have greatly improved that. We have no problem getting in or out of our driveways. I also believe that the study that was done has proven that cut-through traffic has been reduced. It did not seem to indicate that traffic had increased, at least not significantly, on Gilbert. And interestingly enough, it showed a reduction in traffic on Durham and on Chester with a slight increase on O'Keefe. And I found that interesting because my observations have been that O'Keefe Street's gotten a lot better in terms of traffic. So these have had a huge impact on myself and my neighbors. I would strongly encourage you to make them permanent. I believe the survey that was sent out to the Willows residents overwhelmingly supported making these permanent and supported the turn restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. And Amar, I just sent you another audio pin. But it does look like the line might have been disconnected. Let's see. Oh, here we go, Amar. I think we're able to hear you now.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, excellent. I guess the third time's a charm. Appreciate your patience. I really want to thank you guys for considering this agenda item. I know several of the members on this council were on the city council at the time that we put these measures into place as temporary measures. And many of you may recall the rancor and, I think, disruption that folks were feeling in our neighborhood as a result of the traffic. I mean, folks having to wait in their driveways for hours to get out or come home or park their cars. And at the time, it seemed like a fairly insurmountable problem. And the neighbors vanded together, we organized, we got hundreds of signatures and support. You, the members of the city council, heard us. And we put into place a simple measure, which consisted of a handful of traffic signs, which restricted turns for several hours of the day. And I would warn, I would be surprised if you guys got that many complaints after those measures were put into place. I mean, I think Councilmember Mueller, you'll remember, I suspect folks were contacting you on a daily basis during that time. Same thing for Councilmember Carlton. And after these measures were put into place, I'm not sure you guys heard that much more about this particular topic. And so I think the measures have been overwhelmingly successful. On my street on Baywood, for example, pre-turn restrictions, we had about 1,400 cars per day on our street, which is the size of about a block. After these turn restrictions, that number went down to 700. So think about that, a 50% reduction in traffic just on our street. I've got three little daughters. They can bike on the street now during the afternoon when they come home from school, where they never could do that before. The quality of life, not hearing the honking and the people getting upset with one another and the racing down our street, has really improved just the livability of our neighborhood, and not just for us on Baywood, but for people in Wamona, McHenry, and other streets as a result of the combination of these traffic measures, as well as a neighborhood traffic management program that's been put into place in the Willows. And I want to acknowledge that there are certainly, you know, folks that have experienced maybe longer delays in terms of getting out of the neighborhood. That's true for my wife. We take our kids downtown or take them up to Palo Alto for activities after school, and it takes us a little bit of extra time to get to the freeway. But that inconvenience is worth the quality of life benefit and also the significant safety benefit of these restrictions. So thank you, and hope that you make them permanent. Appreciate the time.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Paul Montgomery. Paul, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Firstly, my name is Paul Montgomery. I live on Chester Street, quite close to Willow. And I have been a resident here at this address for more than 20 years. And I'll just echo what some of the other people have said by first saying a hearty thank you to city council and staff for the process and the work that people have done in bringing this finally to a, an opportunity to make it a decision. I'll just take you back to how it was before. And I can say that I would come home from work in the evening at around 6:30 or 7:00. And I was simply unable to enter my street. I would go and park in the VA, and I would walk home, because it was not possible for me to even get into the street. And then after nine o'clock, I'd go fetch my car and bring it home. That's how severe it was. We had traffic on Chester Street. I think possibly Chester was the most impacted, given that it is the street in the neighborhood that enters into Willow Road in closest proximity to Highway 101. And it was just, you know, bump at a bumper for three, four hours sometimes. So it was really very difficult. And I'll just say that the situation is greatly improved. There's no question about it. I myself have to, in the evening, go to Highway 101 reasonably frequently. And it is somewhat of an inconvenience to backtrack from Chester, which is probably about as far as you will have to backtrack to Gilbert to enable yourself to legally enter Willow Road. And I'm actually very happy to do that. So of course, other people are otherwise inconvenienced, but in my opinion, it's a small price to pay. So in summary, I'd like to strongly support the proposal and encourage the city council to adopt the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter comes from Tracy Morris. Tracy, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hi there. Good evening. I just want to echo what's been said. I strongly support making the turn restrictions permanent and would like to thank the city council and staff for getting us to this point. I was also part of the group that organized the neighbors a couple of years ago to address this. I live on Central Avenue, and before the turn restrictions were put in place, we had a lot of cars speeding down our street that would cut through, I guess, over at Baywood, and speed down our street trying to, you know, beat the traffic on Willow Road and make up for lost time. And it was really dangerous. I've seen near misses with people crossing the street. I've seen cars changing lane and actually going in the oncoming lane to pass people on our street. And the difference is night and day. It's, it feels like we've gotten our neighborhood back. I feel safe walking around the street. We've got two kids. I feel safe letting them walk and bike around the neighborhood. And I just want to thank you all and strongly encourage you to vote to keep them permanent. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter, I'd like to return to Penelope. Our next public commenter, I'd like to return to Penelope. Penelope, would you like to address the city council at this time?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So I'd like to thank the city council, thank you so much for everything. I think, you know, I've been involved with this issue since 1992, so I'm probably the longest supporter of trying to get traffic mitigated in the Willows, even led to 10 years on the Transportation Commission in my efforts. So just echoing everything, obviously I live a few doors away from Paul Montgomery on Chester, just even closer to the Willow Road. It's truly amazing, I mean, we have said for years and years, if you don't let it out, it won't come in. And that's simple, those three simple signs for Chester, Durham and O'Keefe, just, I mean, just a few thousand dollars when we have spent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on this issue, was solved by that simple remedy of if you don't let them out, they won't come in. So the traffic is amazing, it's back to how it was almost 30 years ago when I first moved to the Willows neighborhood. And I just, I just, I'm a total supporter and I think, I echo what everybody else says and it really, I don't think for the vast majority of people who live in the Willows, it has really created a negative impact on the way they move around the neighborhood. So I'm not going to take any more time, you know how I feel and thank you, thank you, thank you. And please, please, please make this a permanent thing, thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Tricia Barr. Tricia, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Tricia, are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, oh, there we go.
Yes.
Perfect, there we go.
Took me a second there. Great, thank you, city council and thank you staff for, for again, getting this to this point. I strongly support the staff recommendation to make the turn restrictions permanent. I've lived in the Willows for, for 20 years and it has made a huge difference in the traffic volumes and the speed of the traffic that's coming through the neighborhood. It's also made a huge difference from a safety perspective because there are kids riding their bikes through the Willows during those hours, getting back and forth to school, mostly Laurel Schools upper and lower, kids are going back and forth, as well as Willow Oak School and MA and maybe Alto School, I'm not sure how much bike traffic that brings. But again, similar to what others have said, I do have to reroute, our family needs to reroute sometimes and, you know, we even find ourselves going down in the wrong direction and then turn ourselves back around to go to Gilbert. And it, it's a very minor inconvenience in the scheme of things. And, you know, as you're hearing from many people tonight and according to the survey, the other families feel the same way. I know that staff also recommended removing the no-through-traffic signs. I'm not sure how much of a difference those have made, I mean, it's, it's, if it's, as a system altogether, the signs have made a huge difference. I'd originally thought that the purpose of the no-through-traffic signs was to have ways and Google Maps not direct traffic through the neighborhood. I'm not sure if that was ever, you know, if that was ever determined, if that kind of worked that way or not. But if there's not a downside to making those signs permanent, I would recommend doing that as well. So thank you again to, to staff and to city council, I recommend, I support this recommendation.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Chris Stowerty. Chris, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Thank you very much, hi council. I wanted to add maybe a, an alternate viewpoint, I certainly agree that, oh, I live, I live on Hate Street, which is very close to the, it's right against the sound wall, so very close to the freeway. So I would have been able to, you know, leave my home and go north or south or east, you know, in two minutes. And, and going to Gilbert when Willow is backed up adds about 30 minutes for my ability to get those, you know, 17 yards to the freeway. So it's, I don't think it's really minor for some people, it's definitely minor for others. I do think it accomplished the objective of avoiding cut through traffic. I also think that it's not a good time at all to compare because with COVID, the traffic is down so much anyway. But even before COVID, I do think it, it achieved the objective, but it also made me a captive in my home basically between those hours. It's very difficult to get out. I can go west, that's pretty much how I plan my life, is going west during those hours or just staying home. So there's not, it's not, it's not all perfect. And I just want to acknowledge that because I think there are many others, especially closer to the freeway, right? Those who are close to Gilbert have much easier access and maybe already expected to have to wait on Willow, but it's, it's a hard pill to swallow to have to backtrack, you know, 30 minutes to, to get back to where we were. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And our final public commenter is Kathleen Daly. Kathleen, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hi, sorry, I had a bit of issue trying to get on. A couple of comments, I run the risk of going against a few people that have commented tonight because I own a business at Menalto and Gilbert and all of the people that commented tonight are friends of mine and I consider friends of the Willows community. There are a couple of issues regarding these signs. The first one, the things that, one of the things that has bothered me from the beginning is if you turn off of university and you hit the Chaucer-Pope Bridge, you, you reach for, three or four signs that all say no turn into the community. So I guess that says welcome to Menlo Park. That's always bothered me as the business community at Willows or Menalto and Gilbert rely on everybody coming to the community. The second thing I want to bring up is when the upper campus opened up, I spent a fair amount of time watching the Menalto-Gilbert corner, caring deeply for the families, the kids that were crossing at Oak onto Menalto. And there's, that is a big traffic corner, especially when you have parents coming, leaving the upper campus, trying to get out of the community. I have begged, I have talked to the school administrators, I've talked to parents, I've talked to the, some of the people that were on tonight and begged them to change that from three to four o'clock. That allows the kids from upper campus to get out of the community on their way home and then the traffic can start. I counted as many, I actually stood out there one day and, and many days and counted anywhere from 70 to 100 cars passing in a 20-minute timeframe at that corner, getting, because if you can't get out of the Willows community, if the Gilbert is the only way out, then everybody that comes west of Gil, west of Gilbert has to come to Gilbert to get out of the Willows. It's not safe, I've watched it, I've lived it for 12 years, please at least move that timeframe to four o'clock. The other thing that bothers me probably the most is we've cut off a community of East Palo Alto from getting out to the things that they want to get to too. With the Willow Oak School closing, now those families are going to Bell Haven. If you're trying to get to your child's soccer game, if you're trying to get, to pick up your child, now you have one exit out of that neighborhood and I think it's unfair. So maybe the end, at the end of the day, maybe what we can just do is everybody that's allowed to be in that neighborhood, put a sign on their car that says, hey, I live here too, I just want to get where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And that concludes public comment for J1. Mayor Taylor, you may continue the meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for everyone that provided a public comment. And since we do not have a staff presentation, this is primarily public comment and council discussion. So does anyone have a comment or a question on council on this item? Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I'll comment in the form of, again, I think what we heard in some of the public comments today is that there is no, no quick fix or no sort of panacea to the issue of, of traffic when it comes to the Willows neighborhood. And again, as has been pointed out by others, I think that that has a lot to do with the location on one end, obviously Highway 101 and that being a major sort of transportation thoroughfare. And then on the other side of us, downtown Palo Alto, access to downtown Menlo Park and, and, and obviously the Stanford campus. And so while admitting that there is, there is no panacea, I think that what has been accomplished and, and with these term restrictions of which we heard from most neighbors in the public comment period and certainly, and emails to CCIN, is that it has allowed for some, pre-COVID, for some return to a sense of, of normality with regards to neighborhood streets not having cars backed up for hours. And, and so, and that's exactly the reality as, as some of the residents share that meaning of, of, of residents in the Willows were facing. And so I don't think that this turn restrictions ends, ends this issue. And I think it's something that, you know, we as a, a community, specifically those of us in the Willow who are most impacted, will need to continue. I think, you know, Penelope mentioned that she's been at this since 1992. I don't think that this ends it, but, but I do think it, it again, goes a long ways forward and just sort of returning a, a number of streets in the Willows to just being, you know, regular neighborhood streets. And so in that way, I'm, I'm supportive. And, and I do, I mean, to the extent to which, you know, there is the argument that it traps people in and, and everyone is, are trapped in, we're all trapped in it. No one, no one gets a pass, so whether it is residents of East Palo Alto or residents in Menlo Park, we all are similarly situated. But it really does, again, like I say, return a number of neighborhood streets to being, to what they are neighborhood streets and not major thoroughfares. And so, and I think as many, at least several of the speakers mentioned, it is a, a minor cost to pay, again, some more or less minor than for, for others, but, but to pay to what was the, the reality that existed before that. And I'll just sort of remind about the history, again, this was something that was residents led, right? This was residents seeing that like their quality of life had dramatically decreased. So this wasn't staff, this wasn't city council. Staff and city council were, came after the fact, but it was residents really sort of coming to the realization that, that their quality of life and their neighborhoods on their streets had dropped dramatically and that that something needed to be done. And, and so this was a scenario of which government responding to, to, to residents and them being very sort of clear and upfront about, about a diminution in their quality of life. So those are, those are my, my comments on, on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Carlton?
I have a question for staff. Kathleen Daly made a suggestion on some changes to the timing and I was wondering what the thoughts, opinion were on the impact of if we were to, to change the hours as she suggested. I don't know if Nikinagaya or, oh, hi Richard.
Hi, Councilmember Montgomery and city councilmembers. We did have that come up in the Complete Streets Commission, staging at time, and a couple of people brought up that the school hours, if we changed at the school, would be affected by changing the hours. So the traffic could come in earlier, which would affect the school traffic as well. So they decided to keep hours the way they were.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand, you said to keep the hours the way they were for, for safety?
Yes, yes, to keep the traffic from coming into the neighborhood before four o'clock. So to keep, instead of moving it to four, as she had mentioned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Angulo. Was, was that information, I don't remember seeing that in the report, that having the sign, having the no restriction, no restriction sign started for meant that people would come in earlier and increase the traffic at that time?
It was something that was just mentioned in the Complete Streets Commission, but we, it kind of just went through. So there wasn't anything really in that, through the report that said anything about the time of that. There was something that was mentioned in the Complete Streets Commission, looked at it and tried to keep it, recommendation at four o'clock, at three o'clock.
Okay, just a, a follow-up to that, just thinking about the transition with Ravenswood School District, Willow Oaks, I'm not sure who's going to be housed there, but I believe a charter school. And I'm not sure if they're on the same schedule as Ravenswood is, but now considering, I believe that all students are going to be doing distance learning. At this time, I, I could see supporting this as it is because I don't see the same traffic, the same number of kids traveling through the community as they were before, getting to and from school, or parents traveling in and out of the community, trying to get not to Willow Oak School, but trying to get to Bell Haven that live either in the Willows neighborhood or near the Willows neighborhood. But I would at least like the opportunity to revisit it, considering where we are now. We don't know what things will look like in six months when we return to so-called normal or whatever the new normal is. But I would like the opportunity to revisit it because I'm familiar with that area and then also just thinking about the transitioning that's happening with the school districts, not knowing what's going to happen. And Mr. Angulo, you came back.
Yeah, we could revisit it at another time, once school gets back possession, once COVID goes through, to see whether or not the school times make a difference with the traffic, whether or not we recommend changing the times or not.
Okay, and, and the signs that Ms. Daly brought up, I don't remember exactly what they say, though, are those permanent signs already? That says no turn into the community?
So the signs that she's, no access Willow Road, those were with resolution, the council back in 2017, those are, I believe those are permanent. Not sure, the other signs that were the no-through-traffic are on A-frames, and those were recommended and removing because they're not regulatory signs. But I think these are, they're at the beginning of each block, those. And I think they just say, there are no access to Willow Road signs.
But they, do they say no turn into the community?
From the resolution, I'd say, I don't see one that says no turn in the community.
Okay, because I haven't.
Right, I think what she's referring to is a no access to Willow Road sign.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I would, if it's possible to have someone who's in the neighborhood who is aware of those signs, comment on it and just confirm that they do actually say no access to Willow Road as opposed to no right turn or no access to the community. I would appreciate that before we make a decision.
Good evening, councilmembers. Nikinagaya, Public Works Director, so I can confirm from the photos that we have in our files that the signs say, so there are three signs on the streets with the turn, right turn restrictions headed out of the neighborhood that say no access to Willow Road ahead. They're, they're mounted on A-frames and they've been there since the initial restrictions went into place to provide advance warning so then drivers wouldn't be doing U-turns at the intersections at Willow Road. So I think those set of signs are, are certainly informative for drivers as they, they're trying to get out of the neighborhood, but there, I have a vague memory of Ms. Daly's comments as we were putting in the initial trial signs, I think there were some initial concerns with the no- I think there were some initial concerns with the no-through traffic signs. There are a number of those that, um, also, uh, provide input to drivers as they're coming across the Pope Chaucer Bridge and as you're coming, uh, down woodland and headed towards, uh, Menalto as well. So tho- those signs are also on A-frames, those are the ones we're proposing to remove because they're not enforceable and they, um, do not, um, have any input on the, the Waze traffic, um, requirements that the no-turn signs are the ones that, that Waze will recognize as, as regulatory in nature.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I've, over time, been, I can't believe how long it's been, been in both ways on this. So nine years ago, when we first worked at the Traffic Willow's Transportation Plan and Penelope, you are on Transportation Commission, but together at the time I was against it. And then what changed was, number one, Facebook. Facebook changed, Stanford Hospital changed, and then, uh, and then there was bridge construction, uh, that changed, and then the addition of, of new lights and a new light structure, uh, as you approach Willow, which, uh, which because of that intermittent stopping started cars, started having cars back up and people trying to figure out ways to cut the line. So all those changed conditions led to this cut-through traffic in the Willow's that had gotten much worse than it had been in the past when we first looked at it. I'm, it's, um, it's, I will admit, it's an odd thing tonight to be voting on this at a time when it's like, if we went out and tried to experience it, you wouldn't be able to experience it. But nonetheless, uh, we do recall how it was right before COVID-19 hit, and these signs were still necessary then. And I, uh, I know from visiting, you know, it's interesting because this, the signs are not without inconvenience. It's true to people who live in the neighborhood and to people who visit people in the neighborhood. Uh, we have friends, uh, who live on Chester who we visit often and trying to get home sometimes, it's hard to figure out how to get to Willow, but it's a good thing. So I'm fine. I'm, I am in support of these, uh, signs staying the way they are right now. And I think it's actually difficult to change the sign configuration at this time in terms of hours, just because, uh, we're not sure what that's going to look like, uh, going forward. But that's something that can always be reassessed. And if there is a transfer, if there is a safety issue, that's something that leads to an immediate assessment. So what I would, uh, what I would suggest with respect to that is that there's a direction to tran- our transportation staff to, instead of, uh, Ms. Daly having to stand out in front of our cafe and try to figure out the transportation issue, that we are our transportation engineering team standing out in front of that cafe and figuring out what the issue is and what the proper, what the proper intervention is or mitigation is at that time. Uh, because I think that's probably the most appropriate thing is to get engineering judgment, whether it's an hour change or whether it's something else that's more appropriate. So for that reason, I'm, 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 I'm totally comfortable moving forward tonight, uh, with the caveat that when, uh, school opens, I think we need to prioritize having our transportation engineering team there, uh, on Gilbert to see what needs to be done in order to make sure that what the observed occurrence is, is safe. And so, uh, I'm happy to actually move adoption at this point.
I, I agree. And I'll second.
I didn't know if anybody, I just wanted to follow up to make sure no one else had a, any additional comment. And I don't see any.
Yeah, I was on, I was on council when, uh, this came forward, and I think people were, um, that there, there's always pros and cons, but I think that the majority from what we've heard and seen has been good. And I, I agree with, uh, working with Ms. Daly to see if we can address that issue. So on that basis, I'm happy to second.
So I do have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 6578 authorizing the permitted installation of turn restrictions in the Willow's neighborhood as well as directing staff to return this item, um, when schools are back in session and the COVID pandemic has, uh...
I don't, I don't need the item returned as part of the motion. I just direct to have our transportation engineering team out to view all those intersections at the time COVID is over, and then they can come back with their recommendations, what they have.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying. So then the motion, um, for by Councilmember Mueller is to adopt Resolution Number 6578 as presented with a second by City Councilmember Carlton. By roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And thank you, Mr. Angelo, for coming and providing the, um, answers, um, that the council asked. Thank you. Right, we'll move on to the next item, which is Item J2. And this item does not have a staff representation. Item J2 is to approve the 2020-2021 investment policy for the city and the former Community Development Agency of Menlo Park. And Ms. Heron, we'll go ahead and start, um, with public comment. If we have any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public has a comment on Item J2 regarding the 2020-21 investment policy, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. And seeing no hands raised, um, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So at this time, it's, this item is open for city council discussion. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Um, just, I've not been able to access city email in the last 30 hours or so, so I'm wondering if there was any public comment or any CCI N comments on this item.
As far as web form public comments, there were none received for Item J2. All web form public comments for, uh, every item on the agenda will be available on this agenda, and I will probably be referring to our city manager for any CCI N inquiries.
Uh, good evening. I, I don't believe there were any CCI N, um, suggestions to this, and I would just reinforce that there were no changes to the policy, and it was recommended for approval by Finance and Audit.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mueller to approve the 2020-21 investment policy for the city and the former Community Development Agency of Menlo Park. I have a second by City Councilmember Carlton. And by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item is J3, which, again, does not have a staff presentation. This is the update to the city council and public on COVID-19 emergency and the city's response. And I believe, uh, Councilmember Carlton, this is where your comment, um, goes, but I wanted to check with our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, to see if there were any items that she wanted to, um, bring into the conversation.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, there are no changes that staff is prepared to address tonight.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carlton?
Um, so I spoke to Starla about this earlier today, um, and, uh, I've been concerned, as I'm sure we all are, on the, the stress that it puts on a lot of the households to have people staying with them that aren't necessarily usually there because of COVID. And the balancing that with, uh, the police and, uh, historical experience, I'm told, where, uh, it makes the street safer to not have cars parked in the neighborhood that no one can identify who they belong to, which is why they have the, the permit system. And currently, the permit system, I believe, is a maximum of, of 45 days a year. And it seems that if we're going to enforce that, uh, we should make it easier for people to get a permit, uh, when they have extenuating circumstances so that the cars are known, so that the cars have a place to be parked, and, uh, it's not a safety issue, they're known cars, the police, uh, expect that car to, to be in the neighborhood. And so I just might have put it forward, and we could even ask our new police chief if he's there. It seemed like a good middle ground to, uh, keep, uh, both sides happy while we're in, uh, a difficult situation.
So, uh, it, as it relates to, um, the parking, there's a lot of history there that I don't have. Um, you know, we've been, uh, enforcing again now for a week and a day, and the enforcement has been active, and, you know, we've received some, some calls, some inquiries and some complaints as well. But, um, unless the manager has some direction or some history that she wants to share, I'm not sure that I could provide a lot of background at this point, unless there's a specific question.
Um, well, I, I, the way it had been explained to me before is that, um, the cars that are known, uh, at night tend to stack up in the driveway, which isn't convenient, but at least when the police are driving down the street, they know, uh, which cars should be where, because it's, uh, arguably easier to rob someone if the car's on the street and you assume the car belongs to one of your other neighbors. And I, and I appreciate that. You know, we've, we've certainly had a, a rush on bicycles and other things being stolen recently, and, uh, we want to make sure that that stops. However, we have a lot of problems, I'm told by people, uh, whether they're students coming home or, or other situations where they have more cars than usual, and it won't last forever. It's, it's an issue at the moment. And rather than having, and right now, you can get a permit to park a car in front of your house at night, but there's a limit. And my suggestion is that we extend the limit to six months and then revisit that in six months and, or even three months and see how it's going, see if that's had a negative impact. So, uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, so I think the, the point of this conversation is if the council would like to consider some revisions or temporary revision to the ordinance, and we can come back with staff report at a later point.
Yes.
If that's the direction of the council. Uh, well, I, I was actually suggesting that we could, that we could extend from, at, at the council's judgment, 40 days to three months or six months tonight, um, just to be able to really provide that relief. I'm not really sure what staff report's gonna come back with, but I'll, I'll leave that to your advice. Well, I, I'll check, uh, you know, uh, my magical, uh, powers are diminishing from the Emergency Services Director, but that's when I would want to check in with the, uh, city attorney on. I think the requirements are in an ordinance, and those would need to be modified by the council if they're to be modified. Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'm suggesting the council do. Um, so if it's not noticed correctly, then maybe we can bring that back, but I, I, I would like us to consider that. Okay. Understood. Is it, is it, uh, that we can't currently do it because what has been noticed is regular business with the action of the, uh, city manager rather than the action of the county, uh, of the, uh, city council? It's not on the agenda for discussion tonight. Okay. Um, then I'd like to request that we have it as soon as possible on the agenda, even if it's, uh, without the, you know, the full staff report, because I, I think it would really help people. Okay. Understood. And, and while we're talking about it, while it's not a Brown Act issue, uh, can I ask my colleagues how they feel about it, or should we wait until it's fully agendized?
Vice Mayor Combs?
Oh.
So, I'm sorry.
City Attorney, please go.
Yes. So I, I, I just wanted to say that in terms of a general discussion, um, I think that it's entirely appropriate to have a discussion with respect to this item on the council's thinking on restrictions. It certainly has been an issue that lots of community members have commented on. However, um, I don't think that notice is sufficient for the adoption of a formal parking program. The community really hasn't been notified that, that the council was going to take a specific action this evening, but general background discussion is, is entirely fine.
Okay. I just wanted to ask my colleagues, is this something that you would all like to, to, uh, discuss and consider?
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. Um, I, I have to be honest, I'm, I'm not, uh, in support of, of, of discussing it. Um, you, you know, the, the parking restrictions have historically always been a, you know, a, um, a, a somewhat contentious issue in, in the city, um, for, for obvious reasons. But I, I've always gotten the sense, and, and I don't think the current predicament changes that, that it is something that has enjoyed wide support, um, among members of, of the community. And so, and I understand in the, the connection of, of the pandemic and us assessing staffing and, and the city priorities, um, at, at its very core, a need to reevaluate that and, and just also understanding, um, the challenges that people were, were facing. I think my concern is, is that if you say, let's essentially eliminate it for what would possibly be, uh, an extended period of time, uh, then what you're really saying is, is let's change it, right? Because if you make something go away for a year or a year and a half or two years, um, then essentially you're, you've made a substantive long-term decision that, that that's not something that you want to do anymore. And so my only sort of, uh, and so if we're going to approach it, my approach would be, let's have a discussion about the parking restrictions and whether they still currently fit with, uh, uh, the priorities of the city. But I don't want to have, uh, again, a, a, a discussion couch in this specific situation because it's going to go on for a while, and I think it would be a backdoor sort of way of which then we, we would have made a substantive long-term decision about the parking restrictions without engaging in the full debate and the full transparency that I think that that, that would, would require. And so that's how I, I would approach it. And, and so in that sense, again, I've, 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 I've seen the, you know, the emails. And, and again, and I think what you see is that a lot of people who don't like the parking restrictions don't like that they've come back, right? And, and that's what we're doing. We're, we're sort of getting back into that, the core issue of, of this debate. And, and my, my, again, my approach would be that like, if we want to have that debate, then let's, let, let's have that, that, that debate.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
Candidly, I've been checking when the emails come in because I'm kind of curious, like, where's the issue? And, uh, most of the, most of the emails have come in from district represented, uh, district represented areas of the city. And so when they've come in, I've thought, okay, well, there's a district representative there, I'm going to wait and hear from that district representative, uh, how they want to respond to that. And, um, my understanding is that in the district, in those districts, people have, uh, been both supportive, wanting them to come back, and also been in opposition to them being. It's been both ways. And so, um, I'm actually going to defer to the representatives of those districts where those, where that's been going back and forth to sort of judge that. And what I've seen so far is, uh, and what I, what I've sort of picked up on so far is that people are comfortable, uh, with where we're at. And so if that's the case, I'm comfortable, uh, with where, with where we're at, and that people can, uh, reach out to the city and figure out how to get a permit if they want to have their, want to have their cars. But, uh, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to my colleagues, uh, who, who are a little closer to that action at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
Wanted to clarify, I'm not talking about, uh, no longer having it or, or going any further. Right now, you can have a 45-day permit. I was suggesting that we just double that, uh, and then review how that's going. But if you're not comfortable with that, that's fine, but I was not suggesting that we get rid of it because, uh, to Ms., to Councilmember- But I was not suggesting that we get rid of it because to Mr. To Councilmember Mueller's point, a lot of people are happy it's there. I was just trying to find a way to couch an uncomfortable situation for a short period of time. But that's why I ask, because if it's not something that we want to to do, then why bring it back and why waste waste time?
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, if that's the case, actually, I don't have a problem. So I honestly believe that this I honestly believe that this, you know, ninety days is probably right in terms of the amount of time that if someone applied for a permit that they would need it. So I'd be happy to talk about that. I'm not interested in talking about, you know, longer than that. Because I think ninety days puts us into January or February next year. And, well, is that right? No, August, October. No, it's not. It's not. Yeah, it's December. Damn. But regardless, we're getting close to the end of the year, and God willing, we'll have a vaccine early next year. So maybe we won't. Maybe we won't have to. Maybe we won't have to do a ninety again. Maybe we can go back to a forty five day after that. So I'm comfortable with talking about it for a short duration period of time. One, 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 one period of time that we'd say, okay, from like August to December, we'll we'll do a we'll we'll allow for a ninety day. You know, within that time period or August to January, if someone applies within August, September, October, there'd be a ninety day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller, and and thank you, Councilmember Carlton, for bringing this into discussion. It is definitely a hot topic for us, and I tend to lean on the same side as Vice Mayor Combs. I see what happened over the past several months by having the parking restriction lifted and how it's one thing when you have family members that are coming home and staying. It's another thing when people are just using the comforts of the streets to park their cars for long periods of time. And it's not just two or three days. It's weeks at a time that we've gotten complaints about. So for me, you know, I'm I lean on the same side as Vice Mayor Combs. I'm comfortable with extending a period. But one question I did ask the city manager is how many people have actually applied for permits? If that number has increased drastically, then to me ninety days would seem fair. But if no one has actually applied for the permits, that to me, that's a little bit different. So I and I am conscious of not everyone has a driveway. Not everyone has space in the backyard. People are using their garages to for their home office, for their children's space to study. That piece I understand, and that I have compassion for. It's the I do not want to see cars lined up on Manalto, and our residents can't pull their trash cans out. They can't even park in front of their own house. And so that's the the concern that I have. Or you're trying to make a left turn and there or a right turn, and the car is parked right at the corner. So you you it drive around the city and see what has happened because we didn't enforce it. So and depending on whatever you live in, you'll have a different perspective. And you'd have a different perspective based on whatever your circumstances are. But I would just like to see how many number, how much the purchases have increased for overnight parking.
Why don't we? Why don't we table this? And I and and also see what happens as people start going back to to school. And I I may or may not bring it back as an idea later. And I really deeply appreciate us taking the moment to discuss it. It's not something I'm passionate about. I was just throwing it out there as a way of maybe making things better. So I suggest we table it, and if it seems appropriate, I'll bring it back at a later time.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. There. Is there anything else on item J three? Okay, moving to item K one. Regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Item K one is approved the resolution sixty five seventy seven to amend all city salary schedules adopted on or after December eleventh, twenty sixteen to add the city council members. To introduce this item is our Assistant Administrative Services Director, Dan Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, city council members. So I don't have a long presentation this evening, but I do want to add a little bit of context to the item. So as the city council no doubt knows, the city Calper contracts with Calpers for retirement benefits. And this contract does include a number of provisions which include the requirement that the city maintain a published salary schedule for all classifications. The retirement benefit does include the city council members which elect to participate in Calpers as well. So recently, as the city council may recall from the budget process, an audit was completed by Calpers which identified the absence of city council member from the salary schedule as a minor deficiency. The stipend that is paid to the city council is set in the Menlo Park Municipal Code. And that is the rate that is included in all of the proposed amendments to the salary schedules. So the changes recommended tonight do not change any pay for any classification, including that of city council members, but simply adds the city council member to the list of other classifications. So this was retroactively changed during the budget process for one salary schedule. But we were alerted by Calpers that the salary schedules needed to be covered for the entire period of the Calpers audit, which this recommended action does and would bring all of those salary schedules into compliance with the Calpers contract requirements. So that is all I have for you tonight, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. I I have one question, actually brought this up to the city manager earlier. It's that there were there are a few positions on here that need to be removed. And I'm not sure if that's happened. And that one of them, I believe. Ms. Charlotte Jerome Robinson, do you remember the titles? Library Service Director. The titles were combined, but.
Great. So we've combined two positions. One was the Library Services Director and one was the Community Services Director. And so we probably we probably need to go back and make a combined title because it's now a the position covers both areas.
Do we need to adopt this right away and then it can be amended? Or how would that work?
Well, I think just because it's an outcome of the Calpers audit, it would be better if the council adopted it tonight. We will be bringing back amendments. We do those annually. So at a minimum, we'll bring them back more often than that sometimes. So. But thank you for pointing that out. We will. We'll bring that correction back in in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any follow up questions from the council for staff on this item?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So these are all retroactive ones. So the salary schedule that the council adopted during the budget process this year did include the elimination of the Library Services Director and Community Services Director and did combine those into one. However, these ones are all for past periods when both of those positions did still exist.
The the schedule that I was referring to, it didn't have a date on there, an effective date. It's the one that has the Xs on it. The very last, the very, the last page, K one point three two and one point three three. So I was referring to that one. So there's no, there's no date. It says XX.
Understood. This is a clerical error, I believe. So this should be the the most recent one prior to the one effective on July. So I I believe the date of this one is affected the first pay period of July in twenty nineteen. It was amended the next pay period afterward. So we can go back and and make that amendment. That that one. So my apologies, this is a clerical error, but it is for twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Mueller.
I'm sorry. I was just going to move the item. Speaking to him, speaking into mute, I'm I'm I'll move, move the item.
So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller to approve Resolution number six five seven seven to amend all city salary schedules adopted on or after December eleventh, two thousand and sixteen to add city council members, including updating the clerical error as noted by Mayor Taylor. I have a second by City Councilmember Nash and by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller.
Hi.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
You're welcome. And at this time, there are actually a a couple things coming up in the moment. One is a bio break. But the second is on item K two, where we are discussing our priorities. Considering the time, I just wanted to find out how everyone feels about taking public comment, but moving the item, continuing the item to next Tuesday, August eighteenth. I see nods of heads. So we will meet back here after our bio break.
Thank you. Just as a reminder. Perfect. So in five minutes. So remember to disengage your webcams, microphones, and only engage your webcams upon returning. Thank you. Welcome back, Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the city council. With all members returned to the virtual dais, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda is item K two, Adopt a Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty One City Council Priorities and Work Plan. And at this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our current item K two regarding city council priorities and work plan, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council. So again, any public comment on K two, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. And Mayor Taylor, I have seen, oh, one hand raised. So our public commenter is going to be Kevin G. Kevin, you're off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. I wanted to speak briefly about, just to follow up on the institutional buyer reform plan, which is included in the the work plan projects section. And I had two kind of separate comments on that. The first one, so there was an addendum or an attachment or something included about definitions for key terms that I thought overall was really great, and I appreciated that that was done. And that's. And that's something that in my my own work around just having conversations about race and inequality, having shared definitions is one of those things that seems not super important until you do it, and then you realize how big of a deal, how big of a difference it can make. So I appreciate that was included. It looks like it was just kind of copied and pasted from some of the resources. And I guess I'm curious what the intentions are. There were a couple, like smaller comments I had about it. I think it would be helpful just to include a definition of race because there wasn't one included. And often I found that you know, just the idea of race is one of the concepts that people can have the most disagreement on. And accordingly, it's, you know, one of the things that's most important to to have a shared definition of. And then the definition for institutional racism reads policies, practices, and procedures that work better for white people than for people of color, often unintentionally. And the often unintentionally part of that, I'm just curious kind of what the, what the intention, I guess, behind that definition is because at least from my understanding that that is not correct. So yeah, I'm curious kind of what the, what the plan is for these definitions, how they'll be used. And then I'm also curious about, I know in the meeting last July, we spent a good bit of time talking about the Facebook funding, and I'm curious if, if that's something that the plan was to discuss it more as a component of institutional bias reform, which if it is, I didn't see it included here, so I'm kind of curious what's going on there, or if it's, you know, the plan is to discuss it in some other means, or if not at all. My understanding was that we had kind of figured out that all of that, that specific funding is going to the CRT right now. And I think the, the advice from staff was that, you know, if we wanted to reallocate that funding somewhere else, that the CRT would then have to be funded by regular city funds, but I'm not remembering if a decision was made about, you know, what would happen with that funding, if anything. So I'm just kind of generally curious if there, maybe I'm misremembering something from the meeting, but I'm curious if the, you know, if there are still conversations happening about that or any sort of work or, or anything like that. Thanks.
Thank you for your public comment. And Mayor Taylor, that concludes all hands raised. You may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And we do have Mr. Pecaro's here to do a presentation on this item. So I'm hoping that some of the questions that Mr. Gallagher had will be answered in that presentation. And what is, is not, I did write down those questions. So the answer, we will follow up on your answers, I mean, on your questions, excuse me. Mr. Pecaro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. If I may please present, thank you. Just one second while I load the presentation here. Thank you. And tonight, as the mayor mentioned earlier, and with the council's concurrence, I believe the intent is to go through the presentation very quickly and then continue the discussion to a future meeting date. Just as a quick overview, the intent was the presentation, public comment, council discussion. Our goal is to receive city council action on their top, your top priorities and work plan projects. And then in the, in the event that there are projects that the council either would like added to the top priorities or modified some way or added to the work plan, we would then return on a project by project basis with, with any resource requests that may be necessary, if any. So just very quickly, speaking to the public commenters inquiry regarding terms or definitions, it's very helpful to have them explicit so to minimize confusion going forward. With regard to this particular report, we use three perhaps terminologies that may be very helpful as you're, as you're looking through the recommendation from staff. First is the top priority. This simply tells the city manager that these are the top projects that, and priorities that the city council would like to see major work and milestones completed during the upcoming planning period. That provides the city manager with the authority to and discretion to strategically realign resources, which in order to make those milestones. And this may affect the ability for us to work on other work plan projects that may be identified, capital improvement program, but projects. And sort of at the, at the last sort of resort by way of impacts that could potentially have impact on public service delivery. With regard to work plan, these are all of the other projects prioritized by council, and we will work on them as, as resources are available. And then finally, in this particular report, we have the complete or suspended projects. These are, these are projects that are, were approved by city council in previous work plans and priority sessions and are either substantially complete or suspended. As we, as staff prepared the recommendation this evening, we identified five top priorities for city council consideration. Clearly, those are the councils, the council makes the ultimate decision there. We just wanted to identify some key capacity drivers as, I won't go into all of these in length, but one of the, clearly, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, we went through an arduous budget process that substantially impacted the city's ability to provide some basic services as well as a capacity to provide, to focus on one-time larger projects. Just to be very clear, one of the more, most significant capacity drivers that we have right now is, is in relation to technology. We have, like many other organizations, have struggled or have been given the opportunity to transition away from paper as a paper intensive organization that has presented some challenges and technology is definitely there to help us. And, and we've made some great strides over the last several months, but we still have a way to go. We are, in addition, we are still, as I'm sure all other employers in the area and across the nation are, we are working through what impacts that the distance learning for school age children will have on our workforce, if they're able to report to work or if they need to tend to their commitments. And then finally, employee engagement and, and how, how we are able to communicate and motivate our employees to continue to go the extra mile. There's a, there's a very strong commitment in the organization to do the best possible service to the community. That has been the case for many years. We continue to be dedicated to that. Budget times can be a bit trying on, on employee engagement and as a result, that can result in staff attrition. So staff either retiring or leaving, and those impact our capacity to get projects done. As I mentioned earlier, the five top priorities, transportation master plan continuation from prior year. We talked at length earlier this year about the twenty twenty-two housing element and zoning code updates that are mandated by state law, continuation with work on the Bellhaven Community Center and Library Project. The COVID nineteen local emergency response that has had a tremendous impact on our ability to provide certain services. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the technology master plan implementation. In addition to the five top priority projects recommended by staff, there are eleven additional work plan projects identified, some of them carried over from prior years, some of them new. There are a description, a brief description of each project, and the status of the project is included in the staff report. I'm not going to go over those individually. And finally, just to wrap this up here for the evening, we are seeking council at their next meeting to provide us with your top priorities so that we can get to work on those and move forward. In response to the public speaker's questions regarding terms and definitions, Adrian Lee Bird, our Assistant Director, Community Services, is, has worked on preparing a project scope and plan for the city council to consider, which is included in the report as an attachment. One of the key elements, as the public speaker stated this evening, and as was stated in the July meeting, is that they need to have a common understanding of what words mean. And all of that will, when the council, if the council decides to prioritize this particular initiative, we would want to have a more in-depth conversation about the definitions that the council agrees on and any additions that may need to be, that may make sense as, as race, race is definitely a term that can benefit from a definition. So right now, there is no intention unless the council decides to move forward with the institutional bias reform or whatever, you know, whatever permeation that particular project takes. But in that, wherever we end, we do recommend that we adopt a common language to minimize misunderstanding. And then finally, with regard to the Facebook funding, it's my recollection that that item was, was deferred as a separate item for council discussion. And so I believe that's coming forward at some time in the near future, but I don't have the agenda date for that. So with that, I will end my comments and happy to answer any questions. Or if you would like additional information for a next council meeting, it would be great to know that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecaro's for the presentation and also for following up on some of the questions that the, Mr. Gallagher had. I appreciate that. And are there any clarifying questions for Mr. Pecaro's on this item? Okay. I don't see any questions for you, Mr. Pecaro's. Thank you. Thank you for the staff report and thank you for presenting the information. And at this time, initially, I was going to go ahead and adjourn, but there's one other topic that has, that's on our agenda now that I believe warrants some discussion, and that is the check-in, the forty-five day check-in for the street closure. And I just want to check in with council member Nash and council member Mueller to see if you have any input. I'm not sure if Ms. Fran Dean is on the line, but I would love to hear about the survey that was done. I believe someone stated earlier, there was about two hundred respondents.
Hi, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to let you know that we do have Fran Dean, excuse me, in attendance. I can go ahead and unmute her. And that way she can control her microphone and respond to any questions you or the remaining city council members may have. And just as a reminder, looking at our info items, we should also take public comment for any of these, either following this discussion or before the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Ms. Dean?
Yes, good evening. On June sixteenth, council adopted the emergency resolution to close Santa Cruz Avenue temporarily to allow restaurants, retail, and services to operate businesses in the closed streets consistent with provisions provided by public health orders. The resolution included a forty-five day city council check-in to review the program. And in the same manner in which the Chamber of Commerce provided survey data on potential street closures prior to that June sixteenth action, similarly, we conducted outreach for today's, tonight's forty-five day evaluation. The survey opened on Friday and information provided today was collected through late afternoon. And what I have available for you this evening is a snapshot of the over two hundred responses provided for your consideration. We divided it into business owners and other meaning residents, patrons of downtown. In terms of business owners of the respondents, seventy-four percent operate a business in Menlo Park, and of those businesses, thirty-seven percent were retail, twenty-one percent personal service, seventeen percent restaurateurs, and twenty-five percent others. And of the business owners responding, sixty-one percent are now operating at reduced hours, twenty-nine percent are operating at similar hours prior to COVID nineteen. Two percent of those businesses are internet only, and eight percent of those businesses responding are currently closed. In terms of sales volume, sixty-six percent are experiencing reduced sales volume. And of those sixty-six percent, twenty-three percent say their sales volume corresponds with their reduced hours. There were questions specific to current street closures, and I've rounded everything in percentages to the, to an even number. Social distancing, eighty-five percent believe that street closures provide better social distancing. And in terms of the degree of certain street closure, fifty-one percent believe that the closures are about right, thirty-two percent say it isn't enough, and sixteen percent say it's too much. When asked if this temporary closure should remain in place, sixty-nine percent said yes, eighteen percent said yes, but with modification, and thirteen percent said no closures should remain. Going on for questions on the use of downtown services in the last month, sixty-nine percent have used downtown services more than five times in the last month. Now, I'm defining downtown not specifically just for the area of street closures. In terms of outdoor dining, twenty percent have utilized outdoor dining more than five times in the last month, forty-one percent have dined outdoors less than five times, and thirty-nine percent not at all. Then we asked a question about local shopping habits during the pandemic. In other words, those services that were being frequented, respondents were asked to check all types of retail, dining, or service providers that applied to them. Of the respondents, ninety-one percent are shopping at grocery stores, thirty-seven percent at farmer's markets, thirty-one percent are going to and using grocery or meal delivery services, seventy-five percent are using takeout only at restaurants, fifty-six percent are using outside dining for restaurants, eighteen percent utilizing retail services, fifty-one percent home goods and services. And then in terms of personal services like salons or fitness training, twenty-six percent say they are using that service. And professional services such as financial or legal, seventeen percent of the respondents are using those services. And of all of the respondents, none, one percent are not using any of the above services. And it's also important to note that ninety-one percent of those responding to the survey either work or live in Menlo Park. Now, in many ways, the outdoor expansion is beneficial for restaurant, but through letters, it has not been favored by some of the retail respondents. Again, those are personal or independent letters, not necessarily specific to this survey. However, the pandemic presents an ongoing challenge to everybody, accompanied by the multiple changes in operational guidelines, particularly since San Mateo County has been added to the state watch list, which rescinded previous stepped openings. The ninety-day pilot emergency ordinance covers both a street closure supported by citywide outdoor expansion permitting. As you consider the course of this ordinance, we ask that you evaluate street closures versus outdoor expansion independently. Note that even with the downtown core permit applications, only sixty percent of those applications are within the perimeter of the street closure. Outdoor expansion permits should be extended through the remainder of the year, that is our recommendation, or minimally through the end of daylight savings, irrespective of any street closure decision. of any street closure decision. And thanks very much for the opportunity to provide comments. I would be happy to send the response to the survey to your attention if you so desire, or to the city manager, and she can disseminate that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. And yes, please, can you forward that to the city manager for us? I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to.
And are there any follow-up questions from the council? Or comments? Ms. Heron, do we have any more public comment on this item?
So for any member of the public who wishes to comment on info item L2 regarding the update, update on downtown street closure, please engage that hand feature in the top-right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your mic, and you can address the city council. At this time, I'm opening, Deana Levin. If you'd like to unmute yourself, Adina, you can address the city council at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Deana Levin, I am on the Complete Streets Commission, but speaking only for myself as a Menlo Park resident. And I have two comments on this item. One is, I wonder whether it has been considered or can be considered to have some tables available for people who are eating food from restaurants that are not directly on Santa Cruz. So, for example, recently, I have purchased takeout from Sultana, which is not on Santa Cruz, and also, like, walked and got some takeout food from Cook Seafood, and none of them are in this dining area. And I used the picnic tables in the park to eat this takeout food and was wondering if, you know, for similar purposes of takeout on businesses not right on Santa Cruz, whether a public picnic table might help people patronize businesses that are not immediately in the area that have tables right in front of them. So that is my first question or suggestion. And the other is that the questions that have been asked of the public have focused on what businesses people have patronized. And I am wondering if there might be also any questions of customers in terms of their experience in, you know, visiting the place and kind of staying there. As someone who lives near downtown and walks through there on a frequent basis, I think that, you know, previously, when there were more places that were closed to cars, there were people that were walking around and strolling. And, you know, with the current setup, it may be fewer people. And I wonder if there's any comment from people about their enjoyment of the place and how that relates to their, you know, desire to enjoy the place as well as to patronize various different businesses by staying longer. So those are my two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no further comments on L2. Do you want to open public comment for L1 and L3? Or is there still more discussion on L2?
That depends, well, the council didn't have any questions or comments beforehand, so the answer is yes to your question.
Thank you very much. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on items L1 or L3 on our information item, please engage your hand feature in the top-right side of your screen, and I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council. I have one hand raised here. So Alex Beltramo, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you can address the city council at this time. Again, this is for Alex Beltramo.
Hello.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, I'm just curious on the survey. Sorry, can I get some feedback here? If there's plans to ask the retailers and restaurants on Santa Cruz Avenue their opinion, because it sounds like the survey was the entire city, which is great, but there's a lot of businesses with, you know, their livelihoods at stake. And every day that goes by where people are getting used to shopping in other places, it's hard for them to get those customers back. So that, that was just my question.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Thank you, sir, for your public comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Pam Jones. Pamela Jones, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Yes, Pamela Jones again, and this is actually for L3. I was a little confused about the order here. But in regards to L3, I encourage this item to be agendized for a separate discussion and for there to be public outreach so that the public can also be engaged in the conversation. And since the discussion will lead to, I believe, a more robust information on its impact for the zoning for the entire city and all housing policies, and is extremely important as we begin to look at, at RENA. And with rolling this study in with another study, we may miss significant information. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And at this time, I am seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So are there any questions or comments from the council on item? And I know we took them out of order on item, item L1, which is the city council agenda topics for August to October of 2020. L2, update on the downtown street closure. And then L3, update on the Facebook campus expansion project development agreement. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so L2 came to us this evening as an informational item. I'm happy to have it come back to us as an item, where we could actually discuss action on it. But the way it is, the way it came to us tonight, we can't. So I am, I am open to having that discussion. If colleagues want to see that come back as an action, as an item, a topic about potential action at some point here in the future.
Thank you. I support that. And I don't know, Councilmember Crawton and Councilmember Nash, if your hand was in support or if you had a comment.
No, I, I support that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So I support it, but I also have comments on L1.
Okay.
Shall I, is there any more? Shall I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So on L1, I had a question on, for staff, please, on what is number 17? If we could get a little more information on that, community electronic vehicle infrastructure program and policy and program analysis. I just would love to get a little bit more context, because I have no idea what that is as such.
So I'll kick it off and stand corrected if I'm wrong on this. So I think this is really the discussion of how to build infrastructure for electric vehicles throughout the community. And it, it's part of the, at least the office's sustainability's work.
So when you say, so you're talking about like the charging stations and all?
And making sure that the electrical grid is sufficient to power them.
Thank you. Got it. And then I have one other question, and that is, I'd like to request that number 20, the high-speed rail presentation authorized the mayor to sign a comment letter on California High-Speed Rail Authority Draft EIR for the San Jose-San Francisco Project Section, that that actually comes back to council as a discussion item earlier, or at least as a presentation, so that council can see what is happening with the high-speed rail. Councilmember Mueller and I had a subcommittee, rail subcommittee meeting, and at which High-Speed Rail presented the draft EIR, and we were quite surprised with some of the information, which I think basically being that, well, some of the infrastructure that's required for the high-speed rail that will impact, that is specific to Menlo Park, and also just, I think it's worthwhile bringing everyone up to speed.
Yes, so, well, Councilmember Mueller. Well, I was just going to say, I think due to a staff capacity issue, we cannot get it on the next agenda, but we can do an early release of the draft letter so that you have more time to consider it before the meeting of the 8th.
How would it be, thank you. Is there a venue in which perhaps Councilmember Mueller and I can at least fill in the rest of the council as to what is the, what the issues are, or what sort of what's being discussed? Or do you think that that will be clear from the draft EIR letter? I think there's this impact to the community, which I, and I think that it's worthwhile making sure that everyone's aware of it.
I, I think that's a great question. I mean, I think that we could, it's just a problem of time on the agenda at meetings. We just don't have the time to put everything on the agenda.
I actually, so what I, I'm sorry, I'm actually asking something possibly slightly different, and that's because of the Brown Act, Councilmember Mueller and I can't even speak outside of a rail meeting. And to bring everyone else up, is there any, maybe this, anyway, is there any way we can all five at least get the same information? I guess we could have a.
I have a suggestion, and that's the councilmember reports. Is that you, both of you report at the same meeting?
Okay.
And then we would all have the same information.
Do you have a, I do have, we can do something tonight then, or if we want to postpone it till next week, that would be fine.
Thank you. Ms. Silver? Well, she was there, now she's not. Oh, there we go. Okay. Now she's not.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Taylor, you answered, you answered the question. I think it's fine to do it in council reports. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Mueller?
Oh, I have a question for Ms. Silver.
You're on again.
Yes.
In councilmember reports, let's say hypothetically that two councilmembers are working on a letter, but they can't get the letter in front of everybody for approval by the council tonight, because it wasn't on the agenda. If, but we've been brown acted in that we're talking about this letter. Can we talk about what we're talking about in the letter in councilmember reports? And then that, that eliminate the Brown Act, the Brown Act binding such that the, the mayor, if the mayor wanted to sign that letter with the councilperson, they could to give it more import than just two councilmembers, hypothetically.
Right. So, um, so hypothetically, the question is, who should sign the letter?
Well, hi, so let's say that hypothetically, me and another councilmember have been talking about a letter we want to send somewhere.
Yes.
And then, but then all of a sudden, we discover we can't have the whole council approve it, because it's just agenda-wise doesn't work. So if we, if we talk about the fact we're working on this in councilmember reports, can then one of us walk away from that Brown Act and the mayor step in with that person? So it's, so it could be a letter from the mayor and, and that councilmember to give it more import from the city than just states. We're two councilmembers, we think.
Right, right. So I think under your policies, that the mayor has authority to sign letters that are within an already stated council policy. So it's under that authority, you know, I'm, the letter is just going to further cities' interest. I think that the mayor would have that authority to sign. We'd have to look at that a little bit, look more closely.
We have a discussion at the councilmember reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if there are no more questions or comments on items L1, L2, and L3, we'll move to item M, which is city managers' report.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have a report tonight, but I did want to follow up on the council's discussion regarding the street closures. Is it your direction that we bring back an action item prior to the completion of the 90 days? Councilmember Mueller, I thought that's what you were trying to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I muted myself when I was already, yeah, I mean, honestly, so I don't know that the, what, what action the council will take, but I do think that there's been enough of, I do think the polling and everything that's taken place that we need to have, we need to sit down as council again and talk about, talk about the status of where we are with the opportunity to actually take an action. So I just think it's, I think that's with, with, with everything that's taken place, I think we should have a discussion about it with the opportunity to actually make a decision whether or not we want to keep going or, and extend to the full 90 days or whether or not to keep the status quo. But I do think that there's enough meat there that requires a discussion with the possibility to do something.
Okay.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I would, this may be what you're intending, but I would think that the staff report that we have was very thorough, and if we could put the chambers' numbers with that, that we probably wouldn't need any additional staff work on it. That's, we just need an ability to discuss it.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And no additional report for me.
Thank you. And then next item, city councilmember reports. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so Councilmember Nash should probably present it, because she's so diligently worked on this. It's okay. All right. So the, the Environmental Quality Commission members, the CAP, the CAP subcommittee brought us a letter to go to the California Energy Commission to, to encourage them to pursue as a developmental baseline, all-electric, commercial, and residential for all, for all new, as all-electric for new residential and commercial. And Councilmember Nash and I are working on a letter that initially, the draft letter we were presented was for, on behalf from, that would be from the entire city, but there's no time to get that onto an agenda for everyone to look at. Other cities are sending letters from their city. And so to get a letter from two councilmembers feels kind of, doesn't really have the persuasive import. And so we were, what I, I would be, our hope is that there'd be a way to have the mayor be able to sign the letter. It does, it does match what we did in our, in our adoption earlier this year, actually it was last year, in our. it was last year, in our reach code. So it does fall under an existing council policy. I think that the city attorney could opine that. But regardless, there's weight to it being the mayor's signature. So it needs, so I'm, we offer that up to you if you'd be willing to sign it, since we've talked about it here. It would be on behalf of the mayor of Menlo Park unless the city attorney says that it would be, unless the city attorney agrees that it could be signed on behalf of the city of Menlo Park because it would fit under the reach code policy.
Thank you. So I think that it also codifies the recent resolution on the cap as well that the council adopted. So it's certainly within the purview of the mayor to sign under our, our mayor's signature policy.
Awesome.
They are signs on behalf of, of the city.
Awesome, that's great news. So Madam Mayor, if you're willing, we can submit the letter to you for you to, for your review and consideration.
Thank you. And I have two hands raised. I'm going to take Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Nash.
Sure, what was the name of the bill?
Betsy will pull, we have the draft letter. It's not, I believe it's a bill, I believe it's the building code for next year. So Betsy explained.
So yes, this is actually the California Energy Commission's 2022 Building Energy Efficiency Standards. And it does fall right under both the, as Councilmember Mueller stated, both under our reach codes and under our climate action plan that we just have a resolution on. And the one piece of it is that it, there's actually hope that it'll get filed tomorrow, that we could actually get the signature and send it in tomorrow, that we can provide all that information.
When is it being voted on?
Apparently, it's, I don't know, it's, I don't think it's actually, I can send you a copy of it.
I'd love to see, and, and I'm sure it's fine, I'm sure it's great. It just makes me really uncomfortable having something signed, that all of us agreed with when I haven't even read it. I wish it had been sent to us beforehand because traditionally, the mayor can sign whatever the mayor wants on behalf of the mayor. But it's kind of weird to sign something for the city council when we haven't even had a chance to read it.
Well, the city attorney can, just indicated she can opine whether or not it comports with already adopted city, city policy, and that the mayor can sign if it already comports with adopted city policy. If it falls without the, outside the realm of that, then obviously she wouldn't be able to sign it. She'd have to sign it on behalf of the mayor.
I'm very particular on what is signed in my name and what I sign. I think that's fantastic if she goes to send to the city attorney. I'm okay to, to do this, but I would like to have a copy to read because I haven't had a chance to look at it.
What we can do is, what we can do, all right, so Brown Act's going to start over tomorrow. Madam Mayor, we'll submit the letter to city management this evening as a result of this meeting. And Betsy, if you want to Brown Act with Kat after this, so that she can go ahead and be your Brown Act buddy on this going forward to our next meeting. Does that work with everyone?
I guess, I mean, I don't mean to make it so complicated, I just wanted to have a chance to read it.
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, I can't figure out, the problem is that I think if I say that Betsy and I are still Brown acted and we're going to send you a copy of the letter, I mean, actually, I don't know, city, Carl, can you help us? We need your help.
And Ray, there's one more complication. There's a letter from the CER, the CER club has a similar letter, and so I thought that we could take a look at both letters and see which one we wanted to sign, although I'm also fine if we just stay with the one that we have.
I would be, whatever comports most with city adopted policy is the one we'd have to go with. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to step back and say I'm not Brown acted with anyone after this discussion. The letter will be submitted to the seat, the letter that we've been working on, I think we just submitted to the city attorney to sit down with the mayor. And then why don't you, and then can Carl work then if Betsy Brown acts with Kat to discuss it? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. And, and if you send it through to, to us this evening, we'll get to Kat.
You can send it to me tonight and I'll read it before I go to bed.
Okay. All right, so then Betsy can Brown Act with Cecilia. We'll send the letter to the city attorney and she can send it to you for your review. Kat, and that way, Betsy, you can talk with Cecilia about the letter tomorrow, about the work we've done.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And how does the vice mayor get it?
I can talk to the vice mayor now.
It be distributed to everyone?
I guess, attorney could distribute, I don't know.
Yes, yes.
I'm not, I'm not worried about the.
Just so everyone can see it.
I mean, I was just at the same sense, which it comports with, you know, city policy. And then I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I will, I will trust that, that you four won't embarrass the city with this letter.
Okay.
That worked out, that was some calisthenics. I think we'll remember that, though, for next time. All right. Thank you all.
Okay, are there, you're welcome. Are there any other council member reports? Councilmember Carlton?
I was going to report that Peninsula Clean Energy successfully did a, a refund on everyone's electric bill. Unfortunately, because PG&E actually produced the electric bill, half the people thought it came from PG&E, but it actually came from Peninsula Clean Energy. And we're also working on a program that's going to provide electric bicycles to people who are financially challenged that can apply for that. And I hope we have people in Menlo Park that can benefit from electric bicycles to apply for that. Similarly, it hasn't been completely put forward, but we're, we're working right now on another program where we will provide support for municipalities and schools to have electric buses and electric vehicles, which will help a great deal on the start and stop and, and that aspect of our greenhouse gases. And I'm super proud and super excited on that program as well. So I will keep you posted as it becomes available to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I wanted to report out with Councilmember Mueller about, if that's permitted with the Brown Act issues, about our rail subcommittee meeting and the issues with the EIR from San Francisco to San Jose. And I believe that Ms. Nagaya is putting together a comment letter for the council to sign, the city to send in for a September 9th, I believe, deadline. But what's happening is they're actually, I think we were both quite surprised at some of the impacts that are directly to the city of Menlo Park. And again, this is at the draft EIR stage. Ray, would you like to?
Yeah, 14 to 15 foot sound walls on both sides of the tracks, everywhere but in the downtown, everywhere but at the station. We were like, what? They called it in the IR, they called them sound barriers, and we asked for a greater description of what they were talking about. And they said they were 14 to 15 foot sound walls, which were concrete on both sides of the rail, everywhere that's not in the downtown. And, and we said, that looks like wall through the entire city. And they said, well, we can, we can try to mitigate it with foliage. And we said, we were pretty clear, well, we don't think Ivy's going to cut it, like you're probably going to need to put in a lot of trees, and even then, people are not going to be very happy. So we're going to have to figure this out. But that is the case unless it's completely elevated. So we're going to have a whole discussion again, probably about, from folks about berms versus elevation versus what for this now. If it's elevated, then I guess it's a three foot, like a three foot angled wall as opposed to a complete sound wall.
Something different out of that.
Well, that's what I took from it. But anyway, the, the point is, the EIR is something that we're all going to end up talking about together, and we're going to get quite a bit of input from it, from the public. And there's going to be people who are unhappy with some of those mitigations. So, and the other issue that, that came up in it is that we're probably going to want to talk about quiet zones. Because it turns out, becoming a quiet, going through the work of becoming a quiet zone actually is going to reduce the noise significantly and, and also some of those mitigation significantly. So. You can fill in, and maybe, it may be that I, that I'm incorrect in my, in my recollection of everything, but I've done my best.
I actually thought that it was a six foot sound wall with higher trains, not a three foot. So, but it's. But in addition, they also, there are radios, a radio tower that is 100 feet tall and two feet in circumference, I think it was circumference or diameter, anyway, diameter, I think it's diameter. And it's 100 feet tall every two and a half miles down the track. And we happen to have one that staff is currently working on citing it slightly different than more advantageous to us, but that would still be somewhere with, near Ravenswood Avenue. We will have a 100 foot tower along the train tracks. There's also vibration, which we really didn't get into. And as you probably read in the almanac, there's an issue with emergency, emergency response and emergency vehicles crossing the tracks if there's no grade separation. So it's, but the big ones, the, the sound wall, which they basically said, if, well, you don't have to have it, you can deal with the noise.
So, and I, and I want to explain to folks who might watch this video later, I'm not laughing because I think it's funny, I actually think it's darkly tragic. And that's what's causing my laughter because I just, I can't believe we've gotten to this stage of it, and now all of a sudden, these mitigations are being described. It's just that, it's just darkly tragic that they haven't been described to us before this.
Now, having said that, I've also heard people say not to worry too much about this because the whole draft EIR is not based on the current business plan from the Caltrain, and there's a lot of things that are out of sync there and a lot of issues that need to still be discussed. But this is what we're, this is what we've got to deal with at this point. This is what's on the table. So.
Well, thank you for the report. Very interesting.
Note, set some time in the agenda for that evening because there'll be some people coming to talk with us.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up. Okay, are there any more council member reports? Councilmember Nash?
I actually have one question for staff, and I apologize that I've not given any warning on this, but I have an email from the Sustainable Silicon Valley, which says that Menlo Park is, in partnership with the CCG, the City County Association of Governments of San Mateo County, and the city of Menlo Park, Sustainable Silicon Valley is excited to begin optimizing urban traffic project. And I was wondering if we can get some information on that at some point because it's first, I had heard of it, and it's, sounds interesting, but it would be good to know more. And if there's a paragraph on it, which I could read if people are interested, but otherwise, just if we could agendize that or get some sort of information about it in the future, that would be good.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I have actually one council member report, but I didn't know if any, if a staff person was coming on to respond to Councilmember Nash.
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. So we'd be happy to, to find the report from CCG and share that with the council when they adopted the optimizing traffic project that you referenced. It is a CCG-led project in partnership with Sustainable Silicon Valley. And it essentially works to optimize the traffic signals on major thoroughfares with an emphasis on Bayfront, Expressway, Marsh Road, and Willow Road to maximize the flow through the corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Okay, my, my report, it's that last week, we had a, an SFO roundtable meeting, and the very next day, I received an email asking where we would like to see noise monitors. I'll be forwarding this to staff so that they can help the, the roundtable planning staff figure out where are the best places that noise monitors would be best located in Menlo Park. And that is my only report. And if there isn't anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.